I don't see Melinda.
She here?
She's muted.
Melinda, you might want to unmute yourself. There you go. Okay, all right, let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the June 10th, 2020, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Before we get to item three, before we continue with the agenda, two items. First, yesterday Milton had an election. And we congratulate all of those who were involved in the election, particularly the candidates who put themselves out in front of the people of Milton and sought their votes. We congratulate those who helped them, the workers, and we congratulate the voters for going to the polls and exercising their democratic right. We thank, as much as anyone and more than anyone else, our clerk Sue Galvin in her office and her, everyone in the clerk's office who did a fantastic job. I think, I think Mike Dennehy will correct me if I'm wrong. I think she had 67% or 67% new volunteers that had to go through all new procedures and they did a great job. And we owe them a great debt of gratitude. For the purposes of the Select Board, we certainly congratulate Dan Clark, who ran a very good race for the Select Board. We congratulate the incumbent, Richard Wells, who put himself before the voters for a second time and accomplished something that is not always, that is not very easy. And that's to win a second term, a second three-year term. So congratulations to Richard. And we congratulate our new member, Arthur Doyle, who ran a great race as well and deserves our congratulations. And we welcome him and we look forward to working him over the next, over the next period of months. So congratulations to all. Thank you for all. Welcome to Arthur. And, and on we go. The second item is, before we begin, is, is Burne Lovely. Burne Lovely was a giant of this community. He had a background that few could top, few could match. He was a war hero. He was a very distinguished lawyer at the firm of now known as Goodwin. Used to be known as Goodwin Proctor back when Burne was there for many years. It was probably known then as Goodwin Proctor IV. He was, as I said, a very distinguished in his professional career. And from Milton, he was an incredibly dedicated civil servant. He was involved in town government and town affairs for more than 25 years. He was on the warrant committee. He was a corporator for Milton Hospital. He was a town meeting member. He was president of the Milton High School Boosters. He was chair of the school committee. And he was one of the main drivers behind building the new schools, new back in the early 2000s, but building the schools that so many students benefit from today and the whole town benefits from today. He was also a founding member of the Milton Foundation for Education. Burne was certainly someone on whose broad shoulders we all, we all, we all stand. For me personally, Burne was one of those who I went to for guidance when I initially decided to become more involved in town affairs and had the opportunity to, on occasion, over the course of the last few years, seek his guidance at various times, including the last time, just last February, before COVID hit, over at Wallaston Golf Club where he was a member. So on a personal level, I will certainly miss Burne's guidance and his wisdom and his wit. So I'm going to open the floor before we take a moment. Just if anyone else wants to say anything about, about Burne.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells?
I'd just like to add two points. His most, as you know, when he left Goodwin Proctor, he has been chief counsel for the Archdiocese of Boston now for many years. And during his tenure, both on account of law and under Count O'Malley, he had to steer that, that diocese through many, many legal issues, high-profile national issues. And he did that, I've been on the Pastoral Center many times, in just a professional and spiritual way at the same time. And he never forgot his Marine Corps motto, "Sepher fidellis." And he was a good man for that. He really did. He will be truly missed. I think I sent to all of you the card, O'Malley himself wrote his death notice to the Archdiocese when it was, when it came out on Sunday. He really did. That was a tough, tough job for that man. He didn't have a big staff. He only had one assistant counsel. So tough job during many years. He's been there to shepherd the Archdiocese, which is the largest archdiocese in the Northeast of all that. So I know there are many Catholics and many priests of parishioners and staff and many parishes in this Commonwealth that are very grateful. As well as his educators. The public, the Catholic school system is a very large system in the state. Burne had, was very hands-on that. And his, his ability and his expertise from the time the school committee here truly helped him in shepherding the Catholic school through that. So I would not, I would be remiss in not mentioning that. Especially, he was counsel right up until the final days of his life. So Clough, Boston was a great man, sepherified.
Thank you for that. Katie?
Mr. Chair, I just would echo what everyone else has said. I, I too cite out Burne's guidance and counsel at different times. I had the pleasure of serving, not with him on the same committee, but at the same time as he was on the school committee. I was the chair of the warrant committee for three years during the mid-2000s, first decade. And Burne was the chair or a member of the school committee during all of that time, I think. And there certainly has been no greater advocate or no stronger advocate for the schools than Burne Lovely. There are a lot of strong advocates for the schools. And not, I don't want to indicate and say anything about anyone else's contributions because many people have made contributions to the schools and to the school building projects and Foundation for Education over the years, but none more, certainly not more than Burne. Burne really put his heart and soul into the schools, into the boosters, some of the Milton Athletic events that are tied to the schools. And he did enormous volunteer work for Milton, both as a town meeting member, as the head of the boosters and as a school committee member and chairman for many years. So his guidance was always on point and welcome. And I always enjoyed talking with him and getting his perspective on things. And, you know, people tend to forget that just because you're on one committee doesn't mean you only go to that committee's meetings. Being the chair of the school committee means you go to a lot of warrant committee meetings. You go to some Select Board meetings. You go to a lot of other meetings with PTOs and community organizations. And Burne was a pretty busy corporate partner at Goodwin while he was the chair of the school committee. But he never seemed to be absent from any meeting that had anything to do with the Milton Public Schools. So he leaves a legacy and he's going to be missed. And I was very sorry to hear of his passing. And we'll miss him also, just as a, someone to look up to and to ask questions of from time to time. And I always appreciated his guidance. So my condolences to the Lovely family. And I'm sure they're hearing from many Miltonians whose lives were touched by Burne.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Sorry, today's call, Mr. Chair, on Burne. Beautiful story today's call.
Let's take a moment to, oh, someone say something? No, let's take a moment to reflect on Burne's contributions and his life. Thank you for that. All right. Item three, public comment. We will conduct public comment in just the same way we have since mid-March. And that is as follows. In a moment, our executive secretary, Hillary Waite, will unmute all the lines so that anyone wishing to speak at public comments can state their name. And if they're participating by phone, state the final four digits of their phone number. So we've been identifying you for the purpose of letting you speak. After all those who have indicated and will, indicated a desire to speak have said, have said that, we will mute all, we will mute all the lines. And then we will go down the list and let each person participate in Citizen Speak individually so that there isn't any feedback from the other lines. So I hope that's clear. We're going to unmute all the lines and ask anyone who wishes to participate in Citizen Speak to state their name. And if they're participating by phone, to state the final four digits of their phone number. So Hillary, if you could unmute all the lines.
Hey, guys.
And, and I think there are, all the lines are on. Hillary, just let me know when all the lines are muted.
Yes, Mr. Chair, they are unmuted.
All right. Does anyone wish to participate in Citizen Speak? Going once, going twice. And it does not appear that anyone wishes to participate in Citizen Speak or public comment. All right. We'll move down to item four. I do want to, I've been remiss at the beginning of the meeting, just assuming that Arthur would jump right in and know the process that we've been going through on these online meetings. So, but I, I need, I want to make sure, Arthur, you're comfortable with what we're doing here. And that is, the way we run the meetings typically is we'll ask the board, the members, for any comments or questions that they have. We ask the members to speak when recognized, so everyone's not speaking at once. At times, it's, it's become a little bit of a dinner table conversation over the last few weeks. We want to try to keep that a little more formal, just so we can make sure we can move ahead with decision-making. So Arthur, you can, you can indicate by waving your, waving your hand or to get my attention somehow, or speak up and say, you know, I'd like to be recognized. And then I'll recognize you and you'll speak. And then we'll do that going on. There's also a, a raise-your-hand function on Zoom. I'm not always great at noticing that. So if, if you need to be recognized, just, you know, wave your hand or just, just say something.
Oh, no, thank you.
All right. Any questions on, on anything going forward in terms of procedure? Arthur, are you, I was going to say, Arthur, any questions going forward on procedure? You all?
I'll ask as I run into any. How's that, Mike?
Great, sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation to do so.
All right. Item four, COVID-19 update. Item A is under, item four is COVID-19 tracking with Caroline Kinsella and Alan Bishop. So Hillary, could you unmute Alan Bishop and Caroline Kinsella? And unmute Mr. Dennehy and the members of the board? And then I will turn it over to Ms. Kinsella and Mr. Bishop. And then the rest of us will, will, on our own mute our lines. So we don't, we don't have any background, background sounds for you as you present. So Caroline.
Caroline, still here.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Chair Zulif and Select Board members. So today Milton has 294 cases of COVID-19 in total. And for the past couple of days, we've had no cases, which is excellent news. And the trend has been downward the past two and a half weeks. So every, every indicator in Milton is going in the right way. It's going down. So it's very encouraging to see that. Now, what the, what the board of the Milton Health Department is doing right now is we're working with businesses that are opening up, going to Novara, Steel &amp; Rye, and looking at what they're doing. And they're opening up some seating. So we've been going to their establishments and looking at their plans for their safety plans. And everything is looking great. And today we went to Cunningham Pond. I went with Laura, my health agent, and spoke to the staff there. And it looks encouraging that they're hoping to open up in the beginning of July. So we've been busy with calls about reopening and what the next steps are. And we've been listening to the conference calls from the state every week, twice a week, and from messaging from Governor Baker. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Do you want to take questions or comments on that? Or do you want to, do you want to present on the COVID-19? Why don't we have questions or comments for Caroline on that report? And then we'll go to the, the tracking presentation, Mr. Bishop. Any comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells?
Caroline, just one question. I don't even know if we cover, if, I think you do. Do you cover the public restrooms at Houghton's? The inspections of those at all? Or does DCI do it themselves?
DCI.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on Caroline's update from the members? Seeing none. Caroline, is it, is it you and Alan that are going to present this, make this presentation?
Yeah, we, we spoke just before the meeting. Let me explain, in case of any of those that don't know me, I'm Alan Bishop. I work DPW, actually, in the engineering office. I run the town's GIS, Geographic Information System. And from time to time, I lend tech support to other departments. And I've worked with Carolyn on a number of projects. And she asked me to step in and help her with the database. Now, the, the database, the data you're going to be looking at is from the Maven database. And Carolyn will explain what that is. The Maven database contains the COVID-19 tracking data for Milton. So basically, I had gone in, taken the data, using a module in Excel, created pivot tables, and then a series of charts showing the data based on certain criteria, gender, race, and put together the PowerPoint presentation that you're going to see right now. Carolyn?
Yes. Thank you, Alan, for that introduction about this COVID tracking. So this is a three-month tracking from, the first case that we got in Milton was March 1st. And it goes from March 1st to June 1st. So it's a three-month tracking. And will I ask Hillary to just forward the slide?
Just hit next.
If you could, Hillary?
You're going to like this. This is the COVID virus spreading, but go ahead. So this is just basic information on, actually, Hillary, can you back it up one? This is showing the Maven database that we spoke about. We gathered the information from Maven and we created, go ahead, next.
Yep. So it's a Maven platform that all the data is in. If the, okay, can you hear me? If there's a lab that's generated a positive lab and someone has COVID-19, it's generated and we see it as a state platform. And it's called Maven. So that's where all the information is gathered. And when we find out that there is a person that has tested positive, we follow up and telephone them and interview them. We have a number of questions that we're asking. So all this information is going into this database. That's how we're collecting it.
Now.
And then on the screen, it says, go ahead, Alan.
Just go next. Okay. Now, as we said, we, we've taken the data and we've created a series of charts that we put into the PowerPoint presentation. And you'll, you will notice one thing about the Maven data. There's still data that's being gathered. You'll look at certain attributes like unknown or missing. Don't be concerned about that. That information is still, you know, being collected. It's an ongoing process.
So on this slide, as you see, it's, it's March 1st to June 1st?
Yeah, for March, but you have to back up again.
Back up the slide. I'm sorry. So there's 200?
There's 200, there's actually 334 total records that we created, that we collected. But there's 294, you'll be seeing on the other slides. There's 40 probable. So we didn't use those for the, for the other charts. As you'll see, there'll be, everything would be based off 294.
And the probable, I would just want to interject, is people might think, oh, I had some symptoms of COVID-19 a month or two ago. And they're going and getting some blood work. And they're finding out that they've been exposed, like further out. Like, it was like last month or the month before. And they can go and get a blood test. And what they're finding is that their probable means that they do have those antibodies.
Okay.
Next. Hillary?
Now, this is by cases over the three months. And you can see that in March, there was 44. In April was the, the largest number of 170. And then it dropped down to 80 in May. Go ahead. And again, by gender, we have a few more men came down with it than, than females, 150 to 144. Carolyn, do you want to say anything or? Now, you're going to find that some of the charts are
No, that's good.
More busy than, than others. This is a bar chart. And this is basically looking at cases by age group. The nice thing about using pivot tables, we can actually go in and compare things like age to gender, age to race, and come up with very complicated analysis and charts that you'll actually be seeing. So you're seeing here that the largest group is in the age group of 60 to 69. And the second is 50 to 59, which you'll see over on the right. Actually, we took that out. Okay. So basically, those are the, the highest number in age groups to be affected between 50 and 70. Next. Okay. Now, this is age group by gender. And you can see this is a more complicated chart. But what it's, what it's showing is male, female in an age group. So you can see that at 35, we have more females between 50 and 59, I think. And so you'll see that the, the females are leading the 35, 32 over the males in those age groups. Carolyn, do you want to add anything? No?
Doing great.
Okay. Hillary, next.
No.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we have cases by, by race. And you can see the breakdown now. This is where you'll see the unknowns and the others. Don't worry about that. But basically, we're looking at the greatest group are white and then African-Americans. And then the breakdown, you know, goes from there. Next. This is hospitalized data. So we were able to take who was in the hospital by gender, by age, by other different criteria. And so you can see that the largest number, the 51, there's more men in hospital than, than females. Now, this is hospitalized by age group. You can see the breakdown. 33% is looking at 50 to 59.
No cases from age group zero to nine.
Yeah. Are there any questions as we're going through this?
Alan, we might just have you go through and then we'll have comments or questions after that.
All right. Next. And this is, we're looking now at the outcome. What happened? Who lived, who died, that type of thing? You can see there's information that still is ongoing, being, being collected. But we had 202 recovered and we've had 19 deaths in that three-month period. Next. Now, we did outcome by gender. You're looking by male, female. We've had more men. Let's see. More men. Carolyn, can you explain this?
Recovered.
Well, we had
Looks like you're trying to say there's more men that have recovered.
Yeah. That's, that's what, well, we had more men affected.
There's more men that have passed away. Yep.
Yeah.
Ten men died.
Over three months, we had, we had, okay, over three months, we had 10 men pass away and eight females. The nice thing about this, if we, if we were to go back, we're not going back, and to look at by age groups, you'll see that there's one female at the age of 101, and she recovered. So that's, that was a very happy occurrence. Next. And this is again, outcome by race. You can see the breakdown. And again, we have more whites recovering. That's it. And outcome by age groups. And you're seeing the breakdown again of, you know, male, female. I'm sorry, by, by age breakdown, by grouping. So you're looking at who lived, who died by age. Next. And thank you. Carolyn, anything else you want to throw in as we?
Thank you. I want to thank, thank you. I, I really, I want to thank my staff. And I also want to thank you, Alan, for putting this together. I know it was a lot of hard work on your end to get all this pulled together, all these graphs. I couldn't have done it, these pivot tables over my head. So I thank you for putting that all together.
Well, thank you. The, the nice thing, it was great working with you two. The nice thing about working with the pivot tables, I've actually can use it on a number of different projects, including, because the pivot tables allow you to take a database and summarize by criteria and then look at that specific criteria. I put together today a, a chart showing DPW. And DPW broken down by, by divisions, who does what, you know? And you can see that water does the vast majority of work for DPW than, you know, other, other sectors, forestry or, or highway. So we can use it for a number of different applications. So it was good that we worked with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you for all your work on this, Caroline. Thank you for your continued work on this, in your whole department's work on this. Questions or comments from the members? Mr. Do?
All right. Just a quick question after saying that this is very concise, clear and understandable and the type of reporting that one likes to see with data. Is this something that is or would be appropriate to put on the town website for general public consumption?
It is. It's in, that PowerPoint is actually on the website now.
Okay, thank you.
On the news section on the, on the front page.
Great.
Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
Thank you both. I, I appreciate your putting this together so people can be informed about what's happening in the community. And I was struck by the fact that most of the cases were in the 40 to 70 range. And was wondering if you have any insight into why that was? It may be too early, if we can ever really know. And what that means is we're opening up.
Questions for you, Alan.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping not. It could, it could come down to things like testing. People could have gotten in and that age group are more concerned. And more tests got done. So, you know, more, more cases got diagnosed. But Caroline, do you know, have any? But Caroline, do you know, have any answers?
A good number of those cases to a brushal care center. So especially in April, where the numbers went up, brushal care center was testing at that time. So we saw a bit of a spike in the month of April with more tests being done at brushal care center.
That's why the numbers were so high.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells.
Okay, just a quick question. Caroline, anyone, I don't know, I don't know how many cases actually went to seasons. So if someone passed at seasons of COVID, did that count as a stat for us? Even though they may have been from another community? So they, so let's say someone, I know seasons, most people don't know this. Seasons catchment area is pretty big. So someone contains, so let's say someone gets it from Plymouth, goes to BI Plymouth. And then are there any that like had the final days of their life here at seasons? Or would that account with us?
It wasn't counted in this data, but I'm sure there was a number of people who passed away at seasons from different communities.
And my second thing, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Bishop, I think this will probably maybe the only time we'll ever get to see you here at a select board meeting. And I just want to say, we go way back. We met when you were at MAPC. You have been invaluable in so many ways during my time as chief to inspectional services. In the early days of pictometry, when probably no one even knows what pictometry is, you have been invaluable in so many ways. And this is probably, again, one more time, the use of your, your skill and intelligence on something you probably never thought you'd have to do. But you are, you are one of the hidden secrets of the town of Milton staff. And I thank you for that on behalf of all of us. You're a good man.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And again, if any of you need anything at any time, always willing to help and put anything together you want.
Thank you, Alan.
Other comments or questions?
And Alan came to me and asked me if he could help. So I hadn't reached out to Alan, but he said, can I help you in any way? And I'm glad I said yes. We need help with the pivot tables. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Caroline. And, and we may indeed see Alan at some point along the way. He may be back, so.
He's screwed now.
So, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Caroline, as always. Thank you for your continued work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank, thank you.
Item 4B is our virtual town meeting, and we have Bob Hiss and Frank Schroth. So Hillary, can you unmute Bob Hiss and Frank Schroth? So, Mr. Hiss, our virtual town meeting is scheduled for this coming Monday. So if you want to take the lead on this.
Happy to. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So a few updates, just for the audience to be confirmed. The governor did sign the legislation this past Friday morning. So we were able to confirm the decision made the prior Wednesday with the select board to go ahead with the virtual town meeting. A letter was prepared for all the town meeting members and their, and the ex officios. Thanks to Mike Denny, the town clerk staff. Everything got mailed out on Friday, and I got my copy here, I think on Monday. So I know the letters got out. That's great. As of now, we have 166 people registered. Some of those are still being confirmed by the town clerk, who seemed to take a day off yesterday for some unexplained reason and couldn't get to our clearly important task. But, you know, we'll, we'll let that one slide, I guess, here, and she'll, she'll catch us up. So that gives us quorum when those all come through. By the way, we have some, had some citizens who tried to register. And so that's what the clerk is doing, is validating that only valid vote, like town meeting members are, are clearing the registration process. We've completed with Frank Schroth and the committee's help and Mike Lynch, 10 training sessions for the 10 precincts, the last of which was this past Monday. We have another one scheduled for 7:00 PM this Sunday. We're going to combine the new town meeting member training we typically do on the Sunday before town meeting with a catch-up session for any members who missed it for some reason would like to attend. So that'll be 7:00. It'll be, we'll be using the Zoom webinar technology, the same training, training link we've posted up on the town website. A few other things, in order to try to get an additional 100 members, if possible. One, we have phone numbers for almost all the people who have yet to register. And so our, the school system's auto dialer, robo-call, recorded a call that should go out tomorrow to all those who have, for whom we do not have a registration. I posted an appeal on the Milton Neighbors Facebook page, just to ask people to, if they're town meeting members, go to their letter, go to their email, and do complete the registration process. I'm going to ask folks to complete registration by Sunday, because it does take the clerk time to validate the, the information. And I just can't ask her to be looking at 100 of these things on Monday afternoon for people who have had, you know, time to address this. So we're gonna, we'll have a cutoff on Sunday night for registrations. We have had some people want to take advantage of the PCs and Wi-Fi at the library. So Hillary Wade is helping us register. I think we have two people who wanted to use PCs and one who wants to bring theirs. So again, if a member needs a computer or needs bandwidth, then you can contact Hillary each way to townofmilton.org, and she can get you registered, will get you set up. I will also be distributing a help desk set of phone numbers for people who are trying to get in on Monday night and have difficulty. So we'll be able to have staff helping to register, not register, but get people access if they already have registered, their mic's not working, their camera's not working, something's not working. Let's see. I have put together a consent agenda. So I spent, spent some time this weekend looking at the 30, I think it's 39 articles. I tried to, I wanted to do two things. Put together a typical consent agenda of the non-controversial articles, and then try and approach of looking, since this is really a budget meeting, because you've been able to defer the non-budgetary articles, to assemble into one consent agenda the items that are town budget, that only require a majority, no bonding, no two-thirds. Turns out there's 22 of them in that. So I've assembled that, and I'll, I'll publish this in advance and accept a motion from the floor to pass that as the consent agenda. Because when you're done with that, they're either, the others are all bonding issues, or they're more substantive. They're printing the warrant, there's the stormwater, you know, the more, that clearly would be controversial. There's no non-controversial things left after you go through the potential budget items. We'll follow the same process. Any five members can raise their hand virtually, we'll withdraw an article, and then address it in the normal course of business. And then town meeting can look, can pass most of the budget, all the budget, or if they want to pull them all out, we'll pull them all out, we'll go through them one by one. It's a common approach many towns do across the Commonwealth. I, I would bet the majority address them as a single consent agenda or a single budget. So I think it's a, an idea we could try in this, and given this new technology, this new experience, this may be the time to go try it. Those are my points. Frank, Schroth, any other updates?
No, I don't think so, Bob. I mean, I'm just sort of hanging around to keep you honest. And I, I'd just like to say, I think Bob has done a terrific job at a time that's extremely challenging. And, you know, we are really trying to do something new here. And I want to thank my committee members, and I'm just going to give them a shout out. Hillary, Mike Lynch, Sue Galvin, and Rob Mallett, who, I want to give a shout out to the library staff, who are going to be working that night, as well as the staff that are going to be outside of the library. It's the first night they're going to open the library to the public, or to public outside of library staff. And really, that's it. And thank the town meeting members who participated in the training and gave us some pretty important feedback that we've made every effort to incorporate.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Bob. Comments or questions from the members? Krista Wells.
Right. So I was presented with an interesting question yesterday, and when I, after I heard it, I thought about it. Like, this would apply to more than this just residence. So this is husband and wife of both town meeting members. They have one iPad they share between them. They're at home. How do they both vote? How do they both log in and both vote?
They don't.
I knew it.
And, and we, I, we may have spoken to those people. I'm not sure. We did have some folks in one of the training sessions, and they, they raised that issue. And we're making an effort to, to get an extra laptop to them.
So my follow-up to that is when I thought about this, we have many, you can, you can weigh in on here, Mr. Moderator. I think we have many husbands or wives that are members. Am I correct, that are town meeting members?
We do.
Yeah. So is there anywhere in town where we might have access to like, maybe say 10 iPads, 10 laptops? Are there any thoughts on that infrastructure-wise?
We thought, we haven't had that many requests, but good point. The schools, if they had Chromebooks returned by the seniors, might have some inventory if they are willing to, if that's, if that's a feasible thing for them to do. So I can put in a request to the school department and see if we get that number of requests. Yeah, can we borrow their Chromebooks?
Because going back to our previous speakers, and spending, standing at polls for 10 hours yesterday, you come, because we haven't been out much. I definitely came to the realization, there are still many, many people in this town who fear COVID seriously, and don't, are not ready to come out yet, don't want to come out. So just a thought of, it's only for one night. If we can, even, you know, if we could find a half dozen, I think that might make it a lot easier, because I don't think either one of you want to hear, you know, so-and-so couldn't vote because they both couldn't. So that's, I, I wanted to get that out there now, so we have time to plan for it or address it before we get there on next week. So thank you both, and thank you for your time and effort. This is clearly a strange world we live in.
By the way, if the laptops don't work, the alternate is a phone dial-in.
Right.
Now, will, there, the technology doesn't permit a phone vote through the touchpad. So if we know, know we have people registering for phone access, then we'll, we can call out their vote if they'd like to, you know, be recognized that way. And we'll just say, Mr. Doe, how do you vote? Now, they have to give us a voice vote, and they're going to be out there in the open. But that's the only way the technology can, the phone technology can make it happen. But I'll follow up on the Chromebooks.
Other comment, other comments or questions in the members? Ms. Collins.
So I, I should have asked this Monday at my training, which was wonderful, and the guides are so clear. I really appreciate all the work that everyone's done. But if there's debate and people would like to put forth some sort of amendment, it's not really possible. That's why it needs to be done days in advance. So what happens then?
Right. Yeah, what Ms. Collins is referring to is I've asked during the training the members to, in order to enforce our rule that we receive amendments in writing, to please submit them to me by this Friday night, midnight. So read your warrant. And by the way, people are complying. I'm getting some amendments in already. And questions, by the way, that I'll, I'll route back to Mr. Dennehy if they refer to town departments, et cetera. And so then, if we have them in writing, one that we get the wording right and clear, because you know sometimes members are on the fly, they're making this up. We all struggled with that experience. And we'll be able to put it on the screen so that all the members can see it. However, procedural motions, absolutely, we'll take those from the floor. Motion to refer this back to committee, of course, we'll accept that. I'll call an audible, Ms. Collins. If we get to a point where clearly there's something unanticipated, and the inspiration occurs, and the debate rose in debate, then I'll call an audible. But I'm, I'd like, we need to help the town clerk as well get these things in writing this way. Because there's no, obviously, no walking around with a piece of paper and making sure we get it exactly right here. So I'll still need to have the, the text written down and emailed into me. When I'll have my email on.
Thank you for letting us know, though. That's, that's really encouraging, that, that people got that message and are, are doing their work ahead of time. Thank you.
Well, we've delivered the message. We'll see how many people got the message. That's the next part.
Other comments or questions from the members?
Just thank you for all of your efforts.
So actually, before we let them go, this board needs to decide how it is going to communicate during the town meeting. And so, Bob, if you could lay out what, what our options are. We talked about it a little bit last week, but we need to make a decision, seems to me tonight, how we're going to communicate on Monday evening.
Yes. So one, you could be in person. We're going to go to the council on aging. So that's like the Zoom committee staff, so to speak. So we'll all be physically present. Second, your options are, I think Kevin Fryte, that he could open up a, just a conference call for you and keep it open for X hours, and you communicate, and leave your laptops, your devices alone. You, if you have a second device, you could pull up your, you know, be on your laptop for town meeting. You could go to FaceTime on your phones. You could go to a second Zoom account on your phones, or iPads, or another device. You could, some of the committees are just saying they're going to do a text message. Your stuff is more substantive. That's probably too laborious for some of the questions you, I see you folks debate. So those are the choices.
All right. Thoughts from the members on the three, seems like the three options, in person, conference call line, or some other second account, Zoom or text, or text is the less good option. Ms. Collins.
I just wanted to ask a question. Mr. Moderator, how are you all handling the mask and speaking, you know, in your official role, if you're all present?
We're going to be in a big room and separated out, either in different rooms, all in one place. So if I've got to walk out and go talk to the Zoom administrator, then we'll, then we'll get within six feet apart and speak. But we'll be far enough apart that we'll be socially distanced in the room.
Great, thank you. That, I think that's one of my concerns about us. If we're present together, how would, you know, if we have to wear masks, that would be very difficult to then communicate.
Is there still a room for us at the inn, so to speak?
Well, you could take the large room, and we could go to, I think there's some either conference rooms or small rooms I've been informed of. I'm getting a tour tomorrow, the whole, I've only seen the large rooms. I'm getting a tour, not tomorrow, Friday morning. But perhaps you take the larger room.
Thoughts from the?
Split up in offices in town hall, and then confer quickly in the Cronin, and, and go back to your corner, so to speak.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, the board takes a vacation day. Must be a title of one sometime in our lives.
All right. So, so what do we think? Do we want to try to do something in person at the COA, or in the town hall conference room, or a conference call, or some other secondary account? Mr. Chair, Ms. Collins.
At the last meeting where we met with Frank and Bob, I liked Richard's idea about meeting in person. But I'm open to doing that, but I would be comfortable with whatever my colleagues decide we should do. I understand that people are sensitive to not doing that for the reason Melinda stated. And I thought town council's idea was another possible option. So I, I guess personally, I think meeting in person is better, and then the town council option is probably second. But I don't really feel strongly on that. And if, if others are not comfortable meeting in person, I understand that. So I'm, I'm pretty open.
Other thoughts?
Just, just a follow-up to Katie's point. The town council option is a conference, like an open conference line for us, a discussion, if we're not together, correct?
That's correct. It would be by phone conference.
Okay. Okay.
You know, I, I will say, if we have the space, and if we have the space so that we are sufficiently separate, seems to me it would be more efficient if we were in the same general vicinity to do it. But, but as Katie, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of agnostic on this. But I, but it does seem to me that if we're in that, in the same general vicinity, it may be a little bit easier and more streamlined. Other thoughts?
Let me ask you a question about the conference line. So that would mean if we were to have something where we needed to confer, we would just mute, we would put ourselves on mute on the Zoom call, and then we'd probably just need to have a cell phone available to dial into Kevin's line, which he's going to keep open, I think, for the whole meeting, right? So.
Pretty volunteer. Yeah, just turn off your camera and go mute on Zoom and have your discussion.
Okay.
But Kevin, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If, if we went to the COA, and if they, if the moderator and his staff are in one room, and we're in the other room, even if you cut the room in the two halves, I think Kevin would stay with us, or Kevin stays at his office, and he's available by conference call?
I don't know. I haven't, I don't know that we have a plan for Kevin's, whether he's going to be onsite. I think we need to, Bob, I don't know, you may know this. I, I'm assuming Kevin won't be onsite, but, but I haven't, we haven't had that discussion yet.
Well, he needs to be on Zoom, because he's going to get questions on, as a panelist on camera. So it's really, he needs to be, have access to you and on Zoom at the same time. So I'd say he follows, ideally follows you. If he's uncomfortable, then, you know, you could have five of you on one. You could have, you still have your phone line with access to him.
And, and Bob, is, what's the plan for, for conferring among the chair of the Warren Committee, yourself, town council, me, and perhaps the town clerk?
The, I think that's one of the advantages of. The, I think that's one of the advantages of Kevin's line is you could open it up for the broader conference.
Yeah.
The warrant committee is going to have their own, I think, phone line. They, they met on Monday night and they're not going to be in one place. Many of them are not town meeting members, so they won't even be in the webinar. And so they're going to have a, a phone conference system, I believe, set up.
So, so it would be, it would be doable if we were, if we were onsite but distant in the same, in the same vicinity and then open up the Murphy Hesse, or use the Murphy Hesse conference line for conferring among the, the boards and the moderator. Is that it? Yeah. I, I mean, look, this is something that we don't need to decide right now. I'd be more comfortable if we decided right now.
I would too.
We don't have a, we don't have a planned meeting until, 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 till right before town meeting. So, you know, is, is there anyone who is opposed to an in-person but distant setup? And then using the Murphy Hesse line for communication among the boards and the moderator? Not hearing any opposition.
Let's go for it.
That may be the way we go. So why don't we use, again, if there's any, any other, unless there's any of the, any objection, why don't we do, use that as the plan going forward? So we're, we're doing this on the fly, so it'll be subject to change. But why don't we plan in person? We'll see if it, if it works at the COA, whether it be at the COA or in this building in town hall. And, and then we'll use the Murphy Hesse line for communication with town council and among the boards. Is that, does that work, Bob?
Yes.
What, Mr. Wells?
Just one question, do we know where the clerk's going?
Bob, do you?
I'll have to, I forgot Frank, if she said she was going to be with us, I thought she was.
I, I thought so, Bob.
So, so given that, this is for Mr. Dennehy, I think probably the smartest thing to do, I'm just thinking infrastructure operationally, yeah. So go to the COA tomorrow, walk the site, split the big room in half, see how much room that gives you both, because that could give you, and then take the other rooms. And I think by giving up the big one, I think you could probably make it work for all of us. And then, yeah, for Mr., for you, Chair, for Mr. Zulus, the moderator, you meet in that middle living area there to have any sidebars that you have to have. I think, I think you could probably make it work infrastructure wise. It wouldn't take a lot more.
And in addition to that, we're, we're going to need, Mike, we're going to need to make sure that any department heads that are called upon and town accountant, for example, that are called upon are available as well. So we'll have to make an allowance for that. Any town, town departments that need to be called, department heads that may need to be called in and, you know, town accountant, for example.
By the way, Mike Lynch is serving as our registrar. So he is registering all the department heads who are not town meeting members and won't be getting an invite, making sure they can be there as panelists and you'll appear like you are here. So that if a question comes to the town administrator, DPW, then they'll be able to, we'll unmute, turn their camera on and they'll answer their question. So we're doing that on their behalf.
Okay.
So they'll get an invite. And Mike, I don't know if you're registering the select board or we're expecting them to, but I don't think all of you, we have all of your registrations yet. So we just want to make sure we, we get you.
Don't have mine yet.
Mine's sitting right here beside me and I will do it tonight.
You may get a robocall tomorrow morning, so.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator, if, if I might, so I have the, the text out to both the town clerk and town council as to where they're going to situate themselves. The town clerk replied that she will zoom, she'll be zooming in from a remote location.
Okay.
I don't think she has plans of being at the council on aging. I think the council on aging, to Member Wells's point, if we close that half door and in the Kelly conference room, we should have plenty of space, space for both. And we could use the extra room down the hallway for any type of small conference that may have to take place.
All right. Sounds like we have a plan. It'll be nice to see everyone in person again, albeit distant. And if anything else comes up, Bob, Frank, are we, are we ready to go?
We're ready to go.
All right.
I did have a question for you, not on this, and I don't know if it's on your agenda, but July 27 warrant and then meeting location, because we're probably in phase three by that point. So that could provide us an option. You may have a better pulse on the citizens' interest in getting physically together versus another Zoom meeting. I'm not sure when that, you have to close that, we have to go to printer, but that's something to put on your list.
Yeah, we, we do have a few weeks, I think, before we need to close that. So, so why don't we tee that up for, for a discussion at the next meeting, perhaps next week? Start after, it'll be after, Mr. Dennehy?
The drop dead to the printer is June 19th, a week from, a week from Friday.
Week from Friday, okay. So that'll allow us, if we, if we choose to meet next Wednesday, that'll allow us to make a decision on that after the virtual town.
We'll have a postmortem on that and know about when and, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's July 28th, the, the town meeting, they have to be in the residents' homes on July 14th. And Hillary informed me today that the printing industry takes the week of July 6th off. That's why the 19th is our, is our drop dead.
All right. So we'll, we'll have that on for next, next week and we'll, we'll figure out, we'll, we'll come up with a position on what we, how we want to conduct that and with your advice, Bob, of course.
You know, the one thing people are saying, I mean, they're willing to give this a try, I think with enthusiasm. The one thing they're really missing is not just the social, purely social, but the interaction in person. Going to the mic, I think like that person, they're going to represent my point of view. Should seven people, 25, that kind of interaction, we don't have a way to represent that with the Zoom webinar and that comes up in every training sessions. I think there's a lot of members that would want to be in person. I bet, you know, if we had four more weeks of phase two and see how the numbers go through the Commonwealth and, you know, Caroline's reports, we'd have a lock. Two weeks from now, I bet you we're not going to have enough data for people to feel, to know if they're comfortable then.
Well, Ms. Collins?
Well, in, in the finance committee meeting just prior to this, it was brought to my attention that we, we would be able to reduce the quorum needed for representative town meeting now. Not that that really excites me, but I'm just, I'm just saying that DLS sent out a bulletin, so.
Interesting. I heard that was there for open. I didn't hear it was for representative, interesting.
Yeah, I believe that it's us two now.
Yeah, another data point, Bob, and for all of us, Needham had apparently a town meeting, I think it was Monday. Was it Monday, Katie?
Monday, yeah.
They had it outdoors. And so we may, we may inquire of, of them and apparently went, as I understand from Katie, fairly successfully. So, so we may, we may get some, we may get some feedback from them on, on how that went and, and it may be an outdoor town meeting on the 28th. That may be the best course.
Yeah, through the moderators, I have a complete setup for either outdoor or a large indoor, like high school gym. So there's protocols that are being just already designed and will have been executed by the time we get there, if that becomes our decision.
The one, Mr. Chair, the one issue that they had a problem with was that they were meeting in a parking lot and they ran out of daylight. They, they had a lighting problem. They didn't have any outdoor lights to keep the meeting going. So that became an issue for the outdoor meeting.
That's one thing we have here is if we go to Brooksfield, we've got the lights. I think it's just historically and aesthetically, that will be quite a thing. I, if I'm a professional photographer, I'd like to get a picture of that street town meeting outside all the lights on Brooksfield.
All right. A fruit for the conversation next week and we'll, we'll make it, we'll make a call on it. Thank you, Bob, for all your work. Thank you, Frank, and we'll make this happen on Monday night.
Pretty good.
Stay well, everybody.
Thank you.
You too, Frank.
Night.
Thanks. Bye.
I want to follow C, discussion of the opening of the parks, Mr. Dennehy?
Sure, yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you. As many of you know, the Milton Parks Commissioners, as well as managers, have been working hard with our health department to try to coordinate the safest opening under phase two. They met the other day and spoke and I can run through a quick list of what's open and, and some of the protocols that they have in place. There are guidelines. I, I will say that this is a lot of information. The parks are very active. I took a, a good ride around today at, at different times of the day. The parks are being used. I did see social distancing. They're working on some specifics with respect to hand sanitizer and, and as we understand, there's a short supply and in demand around the communities. But in essence, and, and I'll run through it very quickly. So the Milton Parks and Recreation would like to welcome everyone back to the playgrounds, tennis courts, fields and basketball courts. They ask that, that people take a look at the signs, which are at some of the parks and if they're not there today, they will be shortly, and follow CDC guidelines whenever they can. They worked, again, with our health director, Caroline Cancela, to come up with the safest possible reopening. Obviously, and the weather's been very good the last couple of days. But there's guidelines in place for the tennis courts, the playgrounds, baseball, softball, basketball. Unfortunately, there's some work that needs to be done for the infrastructure up at the street hockey courts at Cunningham Hall. We anticipate that work to be completed this time next week and reopen those. But yeah, if, if, if any member of the community has any questions with respect to what's open and what's not, they've been posted on the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. We've put them on the town's website and any of those questions can be answered by a staffer at town hall by dialing 617-898-4943. Again, I, I participated in their conference call this week and, and over the past two weeks and have to thank Scott McKay, Regina Malley and Ted Carroll for their diligence in, in putting this together. Paul Dimano and Kevin Crissim and Barney DeVor have been doing background checks and seeing what other peers in, in communities, surrounding communities are doing with respect to making sure that our playground equipment is safe and some of the guidelines that need to be put in place. So things are open, there are restrictions. They're working with the sports, the local youth sports organizations to come up with some disclaimers and some rules and regulations under phase two, which is just for practicing only. But you will see a lot of people out at the fields. They're in great shape. The, the parks department's done a great job of maintaining them. So I, I hope everyone uses them and follows proper CDC guidelines. And, and I can answer any questions that they have.
I reckon it's not my dog tonight, Mr. Chair.
Questions, comments from the members? Mr. Doyle?
A comment with the increase in youth unemployment this summer, arranging through the high school, up high school years in particular into college, limitations on summer camps that many families avail them of, quantities of summer camps closing as a result of economic distress. The parks are probably going to be an extraordinarily important outlet for our youth during the coming months. So anything and everything that can be done to wisely invest in them for appropriate use, scheduling hours, programming, et cetera, would be very much to the community's advantage.
Yeah, I, I agree so much, Member Doyle. There was a conversation that went deeper for those that were on the public meeting. There is some concern by the parks managers that after the, the rebalancing of, of the budget this year, their concern is for the lower field at Guile Road, that funding source, which was the fund of feasibility study to get that field that's used by so many entities in town. Schools use it during the day. Milton Youth Football uses it, the high school football team uses it, baseball teams practice down there, soccer teams practice down there. So there is some concern about that field and, and what it's going to take to keep that field going, knowing that everyone's going to want to get out there and use it. And this board and the capital improvement committee, as well as the warrant committee, had supported some funding for that lower field. So they do have some concern about that having to understandably be cut temporarily due to COVID-19 rebalancing. But yeah, very, very good concerns. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from, from the members on the parks reopening? Mr. Wells?
No, good, I'm good, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, thank you for that. Item 4D, in-person versus virtual meetings. Question has been raised by one or maybe more residents about when we may begin to have in-person meetings again. Does anything, is there any, any comments or questions on that from the members?
You referring to us? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, us, yes.
Okay.
Sorry if I wasn't clear, yes, Ms. Collins?
Yes, I, I actually did receive a, a request that we consider meeting in person and allowing residents to also attend meetings. And I, I thought, people may be wondering about why we're not doing that, especially because we have just decided that we will go to the COA and sit together for the annual town meeting. So I, I just thought we should talk about why we're not planning on, on resuming our regular meeting customs of meeting in person. So, and.
Other, other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Collins?
Okay, Katie, go ahead, go ahead.
I think it's premature at, at the present time, but I think as we go through the summer, we may find that we're closer to getting back to be able to meet in person. We just should remind people the difference between us being at town meeting is we're probably going to be in different sections of the COA room. So we're not really going to be, that's not conducive to a meeting that's, especially when it's televised with the camera angles and, and at a lot of our meetings, there's, there's quite a few items on the agenda and there are a lot of people who would have to come in for those. So you're talking of, at most meetings, a fairly large group. And of course, if there's a big issue that's controversial or that is generating a lot of interest, we could have a, a room full of people. So my, just my personal sense is that it's a little bit premature. Even a lot of businesses are still taking a slow approach to getting back to work. I was at the office today downtown in Boston and there, there are more cars on the road, but there's still not a lot of cars in the parking garage and there's not many people in the building. So perhaps as we get through the summer and we get into phase three or phase four, we'll start seeing opportunities to do that. But I, I think we're justified in the approach we've been taking at the present time and for the foreseeable, meaning the next couple, next few weeks, maybe a month or two. I think that's the right course of action.
Mr. Wells?
I agree with Katie on that. I don't think we're even in, in this phase. Do we have anything that anyone can think of that would be big, that would draw a big crowd this summer, say, until we get into phase three or through phase three?
It's, it's hard to.
And I'm just thinking out loud, you know, perhaps maybe if we had something really where we thought there were going to be a lot of people off, we thought we had a meeting where we want someone to come. Maybe we have it outside on the front of the gazebo. We sit up on the last, we sit up on the grass, set up the chairs for them, spread them on the driveway. Mr. Lynch has capability to film because he films all the concerts anyway. It's just, it's an outside the box thought. If we had to have an outside, an in-person meeting, maybe we could have it outside there for a nice night. But I'm with Katie, I think we're, I think we're still a little premature for regular in-person inside meetings.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Collins?
I, at this point, I agree. The, the, the reduced numbers for, for meeting gatherings is still in force and we haven't seen what is going to result from opening yet. And, and that, I, I just think that three-week period is what we need to keep looking at, at this point. So, and we'd need a lot of insect repellent if we met outside at night. Not that I'm not willing to wear it, but just, yeah, there are other problems with doing that, so.
You just definitely gave up where you live. I don't even think of insect repellent, East Milton.
Any other comments or questions? I, I agree, it is premature. It seems to me that once we decide to have in-person meetings, we're having in-person meetings that can provide for a number of residents to attend. And we never know what meeting is going to draw a, a number of attendants, a number of attendees. So we need to, we need to be able to provide for residents. So we need to, we need to be able to provide for residents to attend the meetings, whether it's virtual or in-person. And so to me, it's premature to do it until we can allow for a number of residents to attend. And until we can do that in a safe way, I think, I think we need to wait. All right. Item four E, block parties. Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. So our office was approached by phone this week. People are starting to get ready. I think block parties in our community has become something really, really popular. I know it is in my neighborhood. Very well attended, great way to meet neighbors, share quality time with families. We're starting to get the question as to how block parties, when block parties will be allowable and how they should look. So just a preliminary conversation with this board to get their insight. Having approached it with Caroline Cancela, she's been busy with some restaurant reopenings and stuff. But just wanted to take the temperature of this board and see what you think about block parties because they are very social, not nearly distanced as we know it today. And just wondering what they might look like in the new normal, knowing that some of them begin this time of year and most tend to take place later, later in the year, more towards fall. But we were approached by a neighborhood group the other day.
Comments or questions?
There, if any of you follow the parade, Sunday, the graduation parade, there were a lot of big parties on Lawrence neighbors, side by side. They're going to have them one way or another. I mean, I think we've all seen people's style for some socialization. I think the one benefit we do give them in the block parties, closing the street, is it expands the space too, you know, expands the space they have to distance versus not closing the street. Then they're just in their own properties. Just, it's, we're trying to expand our own spaces for where we want to go by closing the street. We are able to help them in that effort.
Other comments or questions?
I'd just add that, if I may, Mike, that I've seen on a number of streets, neighborhood gatherings without it being a block party and the people managing themselves very, very well, both adults and children. So with the appropriate guidelines coming from the town for block party management, responsible block party management, I would concur with permitting them.
Ms. Collins? Did you have something?
Well, yeah, my concern was that if we allow them, are we condoning the, some of the behavior that we've seen? You know, that Richard just mentioned with the graduation parties. I think if, as Arthur said, if there's a way to put some guidelines in place so that people are maybe socializing from the end of their driveway, maybe we could think about allowing something like that. But I am still a little bit concerned about block parties at this stage. But many of them are in the fall. I know my neighborhood usually has one in October. So the people that are thinking about the fall, that might be more of a timeframe that gives us less pause. But at the moment, anyway, in the next few weeks, I am still a little bit concerned about it.
Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Chair, oh, so go ahead. Go ahead, Michael. So I'm just thinking to everyone's point, perhaps we attach with the, because Michael will get a request that the office to have it because there's DPW and police guidance on them. Maybe we attach a border health guidance to it, just so they know it, just so we kind of reiterate the message we've been pounding home for the past two months. And I'm sure Caroline could agree with that.
Good, yeah.
So the only thing I'll say, I'm hesitant, as Katie is, given the restrictions that continue to be in place on gatherings from the state. And I, you know, I don't think we want to, I think we want to go be cautious about having, having our board do anything that's contrary to the guidance that we're getting from the Department of Public Health. And I'm sure that if we, if we, as everyone said, raise it with Caroline, she'll be cognizant of what the Department of Public Health has said. So, so I think that makes sense. We unfortunately will put another thing on Caroline's plate. But, but it seems to me she'll need to sign off on it. And then she'll have, Caroline is well aware and lives with the guidelines from the state. And so she'll be able to, she'll be able to put those in place and tell us whether, whether allowing that kind of gathering is contrary to any of the current guidelines and gatherings. Mr. Wells?
Why don't we do this, Stephen, kind of make that, let's, to stay in line with where we are, why don't we look at beginning July first? Because I could see July fourth as getting, because a lot of people maybe see how Caroline thinks about it. We'll be close to the Phase Three by then. We may even be in Phase Three. Let's look at, would you agree with that, Mr. Dennehy? You think that would be easier?
Yeah, it's my understanding Phase Three will be June 29th, three weeks after Phase Two, which began this, this past Monday. So that would make sense. And again, the majority of the block parties do take place late summer, early fall, to Member Collins' point. So, yeah, I think that's something that we could entertain after Phase Three is reopened.
All right. Did someone have something?
Yeah, I think everyone said all the things that were on my mind.
Great, great. All right. Item five is discussion approval of the town meeting articles for this coming Monday, June 15. We all have our warrants now. And this board has taken a position, seems to me, on the budget articles. We did approve, we did have a vote on the budget. We have voted to submit the other four articles, Articles 36 through 39. I don't remember, and I'll be corrected by Hillary or Mike if I'm wrong, whether we voted to support or not to support them. This board can do that if we haven't. This board can do that this evening. It can, if it chooses, do it directly before town meeting. Or it can wait until the floor of town meeting. I will say that my preference is to have the board take a position before town meeting. But it's, it's up to the will of the board on whether we want to take any votes to support or not to support any of these articles. So with that, comments or questions? Or motions? Ms. Collins?
Well, I agree. I would feel more comfortable doing that before town meeting. My question is, is Arthur ready? Or should we do it on Monday? We have done that before.
It's a good, it's a good point. And we do want to be sensitive to the fact that Arthur just got through an election and was elected yesterday. And here he is. And so we want to be sensitive to trying to rush him into any, any votes. And so certainly with these and anything tonight, we'll be sensitive to that. And anything, you know, Arthur, please, if you say you want some more time to dig into anything, please say so because, because of the nature of things, you're getting thrown into this very quickly. So.
That's very much appreciated. Thank you. I have read all of the articles twice. And I would have no difficulty with the board acting on them beforehand.
Mr. Wells?
I'm agreeing with you. I'll wait, I'm fine with waiting until, give everyone some more time until just before town meeting. Unless we, Mr. Dennehy, do you think, are we going to have anything else on our agenda that night of significance before town meeting, do you think?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'm comfortable with waiting. I agree with the chair.
Well, I wasn't suggesting it one way or the other. I was opening up, you know, I can do it either way. But if you, if it's better to, I think if you're comfortable, I think we'll have time before town meeting. We can, we can take the vote and we can, we can telegraph that to the members. We certainly want to give everyone the time they need to take a decision one way or the other. As I said, there's only four articles. So we can, we can certainly do that early on Monday. Ms. Collins?
Mr. Chair, Article 36 is a standard article. So I don't think there's anything controversial about that. That appears in the warrants every year. So I think we could at least vote that one. And then if we want to take time on that, 39, I thought we saw some changes being made to that. And I haven't had a chance to look at all of them. Like, I think there was something that came over today on that article. And I was pretty tied up at work, so I couldn't take a look at Article 39, the most recent language from Kevin. But I'll defer to whatever the majority wants to do.
Yeah, so Article 36 is the, is the accepting easements, giving the board, this board authority to accept easements. Article 39, there was some revised language approved by the warrant committee, I believe, Monday night on that. So, so, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable waiting because, in doing all four at once on Monday, or if we want to, if you want to do the easement one now, we can do that if you wish.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept Article 36, authorizing the select board to accept easements. Whether we approve, I'm sorry, approve.
Support it, yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded and in further discussion. Those in favor of this, we roll co-vote Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
To Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
All right.
Mrs. Wallace?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Mrs. Wallace, yes. All right. And so we will discuss, so Mike Dennehy, we'll need to, we'll need to notice a meeting perhaps for, on Monday. Town meeting is at 7:30. Is it giving us enough time if we do it at 6:30? Ms. Collins, you have something?
I just wanted to mention that I think Mr. Dennehy forwarded us an email that speaks to the electronic delivery of warrants article. And just wanted to make sure everyone saw that.
So, so is 6:30 give us enough time on Monday, Monday evening? Or do we want to do it at 6:00?
Is there anything else on the agenda or is it just these articles?
I think it'll be just these articles.
I think 6:30 is more than enough time then.
All right, so we'll post for 6:30 on Monday before town meeting to discuss whether to support Articles 37 through 39. Item six, discussion of the restoring the stabilization funds. Mr. Dennehy, do you have anything on this?
If I might, we had, we had a, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We had a brief discussion before this, the finance subcommittee, Member Collins and Vice Chair Collins. We sat with members of the school committee administration and finance subcommittee. Madam Vice Chair, do you want to just touch upon, it was a very brief discussion, but we did, we did identify the subject matter.
Yes, and Katie, correct me if I go off base. So we just wanted to discuss the, basically the term, a multi-year plan to restore stabilization funds. And we're, we're wondering, in a broad sense, how that would work. And we realized, given the uncertain nature of things, that what, what we would be looking to do would be replacing or restoring the stabilization funds within about three years after the emergency is over. And, but we need to actually look at it on an annual basis and review. And as, as new information arises, we'll be able to, to better see. But we felt that it was important to make sure that we're, we're looking at this on a regular basis and not just saying that we're going to do it, but putting the intention behind it.
Comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Collins?
I think, you know, we had, since we had a consensus of our finance committee and the school committee, I think our board probably needs to decide whether it's a formal vote or at least a consensus. I think we may be asked about this at town meeting. So in order for you to be able to answer that, Mr. Chair, if there's a question about Article Five, then we need to at least be able to, I think, say what our, what our goal might be, even if it's too soon to get into the specifics.
So the goal, the stated goal would be to, to restore the stabilization fund within three years? Is that, is that what it would be?
Well, yeah, we talked about three years, five years. We thought three years might make sense at this time. But is it three years after the pandemic ends versus three years running now, beginning now? We essentially wanted town meeting members to know that we're thinking about this. And removing a million dollars from the stabilization fund for the operating budget does bring us back below the level of our reserves should be. So we want to be able to have a commitment to town meeting and probably to our agencies as well, since we have some big projects coming up, that we're not just borrowing this without a plan to restore it, but we're, we're keeping this front and center on our radar and we'll be talking about it and developing a plan as time goes on.
So, Mr. Wells?
Go ahead, Michael, first, if you've got a comment.
I was just going to say, if the consensus of the board is to develop a plan to restore the stabilization fund within three to five years, and if that is the essence of it, I'm not sure that we need a motion on that. I'm comfortable articulating that as the consensus, as the general view of the board, absent anything more specific. I hesitate to actually have a vote unless we have something more specific. But I'm certainly comfortable saying the consensus of the board is that we will, our intention is to develop a plan to, to restore the stabilization fund as soon as things stabilize and to do that, you know, with all deliberate speed within the next three to five years. Mr. Wells?
Now, my question is, Katie is, and Melinda, and I'm not sure where Amy or Mike are on this. Let's say it's a five-year plan to restore. And I know that you'd like to add to this. Would it be that we add some and then a little more each year or five, so that we're still building on it? In other words, so at the end of five years, instead of just putting back the million, we put back a million plus X more that, to go in there? I'm just thinking long-term. Do, I think we want to try and look more than just putting back what we took out, adding a little more. So I'm more comfortable with a five-year give back than three.
Ms. Collins?
So we're working on also at the same time, financial policies and defining some of these targets. Administrator Dennehy and I sat in on the Senate Ways and Means webinar today. And the picture is looking fairly bleak in the near term. And the next one, two years could be really difficult. So I think that's a great intention to, to restore and increase. And maybe that's really what we should be talking about, looking for those opportunities, while also acknowledging that it's going to be really difficult. But to your point, to, that, that's something that this board will also be defining as we move those policies forward. So that will be helpful.
Other comments or questions? I will say that after the, after the recession on the warrant committee, we established a metric for trying to put a certain percentage of the budget into the stabilization fund every year. That was the goal. That was the baseline goal. And that to the extent that there were additional funds, there was a desire to build it up even more to the point where we're, where we are where we are now, which is, you know, 4.8 million. So, so that might be something to, to think about as a goal, to replenish it over time, establish a goal for a certain percentage of the budget that goes into the stabilization fund with the, with the intention, perhaps, of increasing that, depending on the, depending on the specifics of any year. So that's what we did, that's what, again, we did after the recession, to try to build up the stabilization fund. It's just a possibility of doing that again. Any other comments or questions on this? All right, to be continued. Without objection, I'd like to actually move, this relates to this discussion. Item eight is the discussion of the Budget and Financial Advisory Committee. Without objection, I'd like to go to that right now because it relates in some sense. And this is on the agenda. We have approved the charge for this committee. The charge has us appointing a three-member board to serve for a period of not longer than two years to oversee developing, development and updating financial planning. up, developing, development and updating the financial planning process, and it is a three-year financial plan for the town. Because of the difficulty of meetings, and because there is a two-year sunset on this, it may be better, and because we may want some more people to volunteer for this, so we have a stable of potential appointees, it may make sense to appoint this later in the summer, there is, you know, perhaps in later July or August, given that there is a sunset on this, and maybe makes more sense to appoint it when a meeting is a little bit more easy for the members, so that's a thought on that, on that, we don't have this on for approval, but, you know, my, my thought was it'd be more of a commercial, to try to get people to, see if people were interested, there are a couple of people who've been, who are interested in it, a couple of people would be very, I think, be very good for, for it, but, but we'd like to have, I think, a few more express interests, and, and then get it going, so, questions, comments, or thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair, just, I think we, if we're looking for volunteers to serve, I think we should just say a little bit more about what this committee will do, because budget and financial advisory has a name somewhat of warrant committee, and the finance committees of our board, and the school committee, so this is a group that really would be focused on working with the town administrator and the accountant and others about developing a long-range plan, which we have a basic model for, but it would be focused on long, a three-year, long-range plan.
That's right. Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
So, I, I was wondering if this, this school committee, you know, has been contacted about this, and, and they, and, but if they have any vision for how this, this will work, or, or they're looking forward to it happening, because, you know, it's, if it's under the, the direction of the select board finance committee, but they're working with schools too, I didn't know if we should, it should be under both finance committees, or, I don't know, just a question.
So it's, so, so the answer to the first question is yes, before we approve this, this was floated with the school committee, discussed with the, certainly the school, I discussed with the school committee chair, I don't know whether they have discussed it as a group, as a committee, don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly, we can certainly look into that. Given that this is a, a, my view, given that this is a town-wide exercise, seems to me that that, as a result of that, it needs to stay within the select board, but, but that's my view, and that's, that's how we, that's how we voted it back a couple of months ago, but, but.
It just occurred to me, as we've been working more than usual with them because of all of this, other, yeah, I, I hadn't thought to say that, or even thought about that previously, but thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we should, you know, as you had done, inform the school committee, and, and we want to have as much communication and cooperation with them as possible, but the long-range financial plan is actually the town administrator legislation, we wrote that in, so that, I think it relates enough to the role of the town administrator and this board, and in the past, it's been done by, you know, town administrator, David Colton did a five-year financial plan back around two thousand six, two thousand seven timeframe, it's been updated a few times over the years by, usually by the town administrator, working with department heads, so I, I think it is proper that it be appointed by our board because of that, but obviously, we need to involve the schools, and they're fifty percent of the budget, so the committee's going to need to be working a lot with them and getting their input into what their needs are over the next few years.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members? All right, so we will keep this, we will try to inspire more people to volunteer for this committee, and we will get this appointed, any disagreement with the idea of getting it appointed a little bit later, given the two-year sunset period, and given the, given the difficulty of meeting in the short term?
No disagreement.
I agree, I'm fine with that as well.
All right, so we'll, we'll keep, keep an eye on this, and, and, and see if we get some more potential appointees, and get this appointed later in the summer. All right, going back to item seven, last week, and, and again, Mr. Doyle wasn't a member of the board last week, and so he didn't benefit from the discussion as a member of the board, but last week, we had a very fruitful, I think fruitful discussion with Karen Gross-Horn of Courageous Conversations Towards Racial Justice, Reverend Lisa Ward of the Milton Interfaith clergy association, and Reverend Nobel Scapers of the Trinity Church in Marsfield, about equity and justice for all, and some of the issues that have been brought up in the country and in the town over the last couple of weeks. One of the things that was, was mentioned by that group was the possibility of a task force to look into these issues, and so this follow-up is to have a discussion on whether the board is interested in pursuing that kind of a task force to look into these issues, so this is on for discussion, and again, we're sensitive to, to Mr. Doyle not having the benefit of that discussion last week, and so wouldn't try to press a decision on this the day after the election, but, but still think it's fruitful to have a discussion on whether this is a direction the board wants to go, so comments or questions?
Go last.
Sorry, Ms. Collins?
Well, I appreciate you're, you're bringing this to us, and I'm aware of the offer from Courageous Conversations and MICA to continue working with us, and I think we really need that. There are lots of, I mean, everything in town touches people's lives, and I think looking at that and broadway through, broad conversations to begin with, and then honing in on things, is needed and really useful, I mean, you look at transportation justice, people don't think about that, people don't think about how much that, that affects people, or just the day-to-day touches that town services bring to people's lives, and how people might experience those differently, so I, I, I would like to have more conversations with them about shaping something that is, that starts out, and then we really hear what people, what, what would be meaningful to people, and maybe in the end, it would be a task force, but maybe it's something else, and I'm really, really curious about, about that. Maybe people would like more opportunities to, to speak and meet together. Courageous Conversations model is just so powerful, I have learned so much, and become, I think, closer to our community, to, to, you know, especially the perspectives of people of color, though I do have friends also, but it's different when it's your community, and you're, you're trying to help represent their needs, so, so I, I think I, I'd like to continue talking with them to, to sort of fashion something, and also talking to town departments and things at the same time, so that we can, we can really come up with what's, what's needed, or what other people, you know, people, residents feel is needed.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Collins?
Mr. Chair, I think it's a good effort, I like what you put together, I like the fact that the Courageous Conversations, the clergy, citizens for diverse Milton residents would be included, as well as the town administrator, superintendent of schools, or their designees, the only, and this is just a question, the only question I raise is whether a member of the board and a member of the Affordable Housing Trust need to be members, and, and I defer to what the majority of the board thinks on this, I, I'm just putting it out there for thought, that we've created a lot of committees in the last few years, and this is an advisory body to our board, some advisory committees don't have members of the board on it, so I guess I'm kind of struggling with, there's a, the time commitment for being on this board is, is large to begin with, we're all serving on a lot more committees than we ever used to, and that's something I think we need to think about going forward. The Affordable Housing Trustees are meeting now twice a month, I'm just, I worry a little bit about the time commitment for some of those volunteers, and that's on the one hand, but on the other hand is the fact that this is such an important issue, and if we have a member of our board who's willing to commit the time to it, and go to the meetings and take part, then, then, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I like what you put together, and I think we just need to think about, and, and maybe we put a member of the board and a member of the Affordable Housing Trust on this committee, but we think going forward about whether we want to include members of our board on a lot of future committees, because I, I do think that, you know, I'm, we're all on probably three or four or five of them, and it does get to be, it stretches people pretty thinly, and we just need to keep that in mind. In, in reading this again, I'm reminded that there is a personnel board, a personnel board bylaw that we revised a few years ago, and I don't think we've, we've actually followed through on this section in the bylaw that requires our board to annually review the town's hiring, and whether we've met some goals toward having our employees reflect the diversity of the town, so I think we need to focus on that and get that on a future agenda, and, and perhaps some, that's something this task force could help us with, and either review on its own what that policy requires, and whether we're, there's more that we can do, and how we might best comply with it, but that is something that I was reminded of in reading, in reading your task force, so I think this is a great effort, and I will support it, the only question, whether there's any change in the membership, and again, I'm knowing how sensitive and how important and timely a topic this is, I'm in favor of putting a member of our board on, if that's what the majority wants to do.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
So first, let me thank you for taking the time to do this, you know, I should get a little bit with you. You know, this is a highly emotional time for our country. We do live, we're fortunate to live in a very diverse community, but race is an issue which we're seeing each and every day, that is bigger than most people see, you know, it's, I always say, I say very often on this board, it's, it's, it's very easy to be selfish in life, and parochial, and just think yourself, and not think about others, and clearly, perhaps the murder of George Floyd will make us do that, but the thing that I'm concerned with, and I truly believe, is that we're a little premature to be at this, as you know, the, in your initial proposal, you wanted to have the chief, and I think, after talking to many of the officers, there's a lot of emotion there, especially in our minority offices, and one of them said to me today, you know, we appall the murder of George Floyd, we think it's as atrocious as anyone, but the question is, what did we do wrong? For twenty-something years, this town has been building and building and building partnerships, especially from a public safety perspective, to be inclusive, receptive, and embrace, embrace everyone in this community, like, just in a conversation I had with Melinda, today I named five significant people of color that live in this town, five, that she didn't know, former, former chair of the SGC, the only black Muslim captain in the Boston Police Department, Captain Haji Hussein goes to this town, legal counsel to B.C. lives in this town, I mean, there's so many people that, that, I just want to catch as big of a platform as it can, but to get back to the trust, definitely our trust has been shaken, and truly, all they feel has been shaken, and they haven't done anything to violate the trust, and I think that, to get back to that, I think we need to take more baby steps, it's almost like as a, in a family, in your home, you sit on the kitchen table and try to deal with issues, and they can't, I think, you know, coffee, you know, we have coffee with, there's a reason why they have coffee with a cop, there's a reason why Commissioner Gross goes around and does things like that, I, I think we need to take far more baby steps to know that you look at what's working for us, and look at how we make it better, so that we don't trip and fall, I mean, one of the things that bothers me, and I don't, I'm trying not to bring emotion into this, and you and I saw an email that was shared with us this week, one of the things that bothers me is people are asking us questions, like, the police department has done something wrong, and they haven't, they haven't, they, you know, as I said, as I said, you and I were on the deck a week ago, don't look at the uniform of the officers, look at the faces, the makeup, and their actions, and I know that that was echoed on the park leak, you know, look at how the officers interacted, they're leaders of this community, and, and I don't want to single out them, I mean, the DPW, do any of you know that, you know, we have a very diverse DPW, we have some great people there, I think that we need to build on the trust that we have, I, I think it's a little too preliminary for a task force, and, and while I get where you're going, I think the task force needs to be more inclusive, and perhaps the task force, I mean, from the, from just, I mean, some little sidebar meetings in this community amongst the groups that we have, representing children, residents, businesses, seniors, and one of the things that Karen said that was so true last week was, Milton is one of only three communities where people kind of want to come and thrive and have a great quality of life, part of that is because of the infrastructure, the personnel, and the diversity of this town, and it was not easy. The first community group, it's a test for all of you, was the first community group in Milton neighborhood group, anyone know where it was, what the neighborhood was, or how it was created? Katie might know, still exists today, you don't hear about it as much, it was the Carmike Cliffs Neighborhood Association, it was in the nineteen-eighties, at the time, there had been a ton of street robberies, particularly along the trolley stops from Mattapan to Ashburn, these, some of these, I remember one night, I was out when a respiratory therapist was stabbed viciously at the Central FT stop, and he almost died, and, and Carmike Cliffs was one of the first really diverse neighborhoods in Milton, and they came to a police meeting, I was a young cop, and they wanted to meet with the police department, and they didn't want, and the police chief at the time said no, because he felt, as many chiefs at that time felt, well, I'm in charge of public safety, you don't know you, and I went to my first Carmike Cliffs meeting, and I remember sitting there with Charlie Powers and Kevin Murden, and we realized that day, the mission of policing is not about us, it's about the community, and we also realized that to be effective as police department, the department needs to be reflective of the community, I think we can say that for every agency and every aspect of our department, I know I'm going on for a long time, but I'm just, I think we're a little ahead of this right now, and I would not be in favor, but I am in favor, starting some dialogue, even if it's on the smallest group, I think I said the other day, I think our interfaith clergy really needs, you know, I, my worst day as chief was when the Rebels family went through the most undescribable multiple murder that you could ever imagine, a Haitian-American family, and it was just, it was national news, but I can tell you, it wasn't the governor who lived in our community at that time, it was the, it was the clergy, and the leadership of the community, and the Haitian-American community of this town, of this community, of our town, Milton, that made those days, not just for the Rebels family in that neighborhood, but for the police officers as well, so not one thing was ever interrupted, it was one of the most incredible things I ever witnessed, someone reminded me yesterday about going to the funeral of those three kids, and it was not an easy thing, but it speaks to the greatness of, that goes on in this community, and so for those, and I know there are some, I'm not going to mention them, there are some who think that, you know, their police department is, or their offices somehow embrace the theories of the Minneapolis murdering police officer, nothing, nothing, nothing could be further from the truth, so I just ask that we take baby steps, that we do as much as we can in a small way to continue to build the trust that exists in this community, because I think it's the best way of us moving, so thank you for allowing me additional time on that.
Other comments or questions from the members?
The comments or questions from the members?
I have a comment. I don't want to jump into much if anyone else, you know, has, who hasn't spoken yet, but Richard, I just want to point out two things. One is that at the discussion last week, I think it was Karen who actually suggested the task force. And I, you know, I want to be, I was, because we've gotten a couple of emails, you know, I was pretty clear that I, I think we have to recognize that going back, not only our current chief king, but when you were chief and when Kevin Murn was chief, we've had a strong focus on community policing in this town. And our police department has spent time training and making sure that we are focused on deescalating situations and not, you know, and not, not engaging in situations that might make a situation worse. So I think we have to recognize and we have to defend our police department for all of the good work that's been done over the last couple of decades. You could turn the hands of the clock back a couple of decades ago and there was a lot of talk about the positive community policing that was being done in this town. So we have to recognize that. But secondly, I don't, as I'm reading the task force that Mike Zulis put together and he can speak better to this proposal than I can, I, I'm not reading it as being directed just at the police department. It, it speaks to, you know, town policies, procedures, budgets. And using the Personnel Board example that I just gave, I, I think that if we're, if the, I think as I read this and as I understand it, the focus is a lot broader than just the police issues, which, which we have a lot of good things to report on and say about that issue. But it seems to me that this is a lot broader than the police. And we could always adjust the number of residents who are on the committee if you think that it's, if it's not representative enough of residents, I, it's, where it's just a proposal, I think the membership could be up for discussion, but I, I do like some of the organizations that are represented here. So I just wanted to point out those two things.
So, so I will say that it is intended, at least in my view, it is, it is intended and it's important for this to be a broad review of the town departments. Because I think we all agree, I know we all agree, that those men and women of the Milton Police Department who devote their lives to protect and serve do a great job. And our department is, 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 as Katie pointed out, for many years and currently is, had a lot of success with community policing and de-escalation efforts. And a lot of the funding goes into mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and all of those community policing efforts that, that the town, that is helpful on these issues. So this, this isn't, this, just because the police department is doing a lot of positive things doesn't mean that race is not an issue in this town. So this isn't focused on the police department. This is focused on race as an issue in this town in that, you know, the police department is a department of the town, so that is part of it. Seems to me when we have issues in this town, we put together groups to look into those issues. Traffic was an issue, we put together traffic mitigation committee. Airplanes is an issue, we have an airplane noise advisory committee. Having a youth center was an issue, we put together youth task force. Youth task force, seems to me if race is an issue, we need to put together a group to take a look at this and take a look at this in the context of the town. And, you know, for me, I, I, I don't think it's the time for baby steps and I don't think this is preliminary and, and for my money, I'd like to stay ahead of this. Doesn't mean we need to take action tonight on it, we need to think about it. But, but this is something that I think should be a priority. I think looking at town policies and procedures and budgets is important and is important in this context. And, and I think if we, to put together a group to do that would serve the town and would serve, would serve us well. So those are my views on it and, and, you know, as Katie said, my, my, my view is that this is a broad view, not just focused on one department in town, but looking at all of the town policies, procedures and budgets in the context of equity and just, and racial and justice for all. So. Mr., Mr. Doyle?
Recognizing newness to this, I had three observations, Mr. Chairman, to thank. May, one is it's well conceived and put forward. My thought be given to the possibility of a synonym or a substitute for task force, a working group or advisory committee tasked with these responsibilities. Sometimes wording can be misinterpreted or whatnot and that can affect people who might want to come on to it or accept office to be on it. And I thought when I read it that the point that Katie raised earlier about a member of the board being on it might be something to consider as well. So that the, the body that has this very important doesn't have any question about its freedom to do what's intended. So this is, this is good and important and timely work.
Thank you. The only thing I, I would say about a member of the board and I, you know, some committees work well without a member of the board, some of them work well with a member of the board. Sometimes it can help to drive the work of the committee, can lend some insight. If you're a member of the board on the committee can lend some insight as to, you know, as to the process of government, how to actually make proposals happen and to move forward with things. So sometimes that can be helpful. But as Katie says, and as you point out, Arthur, sometimes perhaps it'd be more freedom if, if the members of the board weren't, weren't involved. So I, 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 I take your point in that. I, I think it, I think, I think that makes, makes sense. Mr. Wells?
I just want to reiterate, just, I know, I get your point, but we clearly all know that, you know, the spark that lit this fire is a police action. The emails that were received and the calls were received and the call, if any of you have talked to the chief, as I have, I do it as much out of concern understanding what it's like to be in his chair right now. One of these, one of the groups you have listed made a very strong and negative call to him directly and voiced what they think should happen in the Milton Police Department, which I won't get into, but it's just not right. Email that you, I shared with you, that you and I was to receive from a, from a town meeting member, it was all about police department. I just, I just think that I'm not against the idea, I just think it's a little premature right now. I don't want to make a motion to defer it, I'm more like, you know, as we speak tonight, you don't know, there's Milton police officers in Boston helping Boston tonight, who god knows what could happen. And I know I'm, I'm talking about police department right now, but I'm meaning the whole depart, the whole town. We are responsive as a community. And I just think we need to take a little bit of time and I know you may not agree with me in baby steps, but I say this as one who stepped outside himself. Katie may remember a few years ago, Captain Hussein was captain of District Three and he was being plagued with a series of murders and I just felt his chief was incumbent, he was a resident of our town, that he was having peace walks in the most volatile neighborhoods each and every night. I went in uniform and marched with him and, and each night took several Milton officers with me. And some people said, why are you doing that? Because I believe then, as I believe now, this is why I supported the DePonton Initiative two weeks ago. We are only as good as our neighbors. You get the person who is next door to us, upstairs, above us, on the community next to us. And right now is a very, very emotional time and a very, very difficult time. I can't stress it to you enough for the men and women who are out there representing us every day. And, and I would, it would kill me being on this board to see that trust shaken in each way because I think they worry about it more than you and I do. Because they're the ones who work each and every day to ensure that happens. So I'm just asking for some time, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just think timing of it right now, given all things are still going on. That's all. Thank you for hearing me.
Other comments or questions from members? Ms., Ms. Collins?
And I, I think, I, it is, as I said, it is work that needs to be done. I guess just seeing how unsettled people are and with excellent, you know, good, good reason, very sad. I, I guess I just want to make sure also that we're, I, I'd like to give people a wider opportunity to, to voice their needs and feelings. But I understand what I'm really asking for is a little different than what's under the Slipboard's purview. And that really came out of our discussion with Courageous Conversations and Micah and that follow-up offer to work together. And I, I, I would really like to see that work expanded so that we can create some bridges and some real understanding of the impact that that, you know, well, for, I'll just speak for myself, my privilege has had. I, I'm, I'm looking at two different things, I suppose. I think that they're both important, but I think that we need to also do a little repair in order to do a good job with this. I like your idea, Arthur, just to call it an advisory committee. Because there, there is a lot of hurt everywhere and I think we want to take good care of people as we launch this so that so that it really is a community effort and speaks to 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 real equity and healing.
Ms. Collins?
So I've been listening closely to what Richard's been saying to try to really get more of an understanding of where you're coming from, Richard. And I think I want to argue the flip side because I, I hear what you're saying. But here's my concern. And, and I do like Arthur's suggestion to name it something other than a task force, even though that's what Karen had suggested. I take Arthur's point that maybe a different name might be more appealing to attracting members. It's such an unusual time right now. Just looking at some of the Facebook and the social media posts and talking to some colleagues in other communities, some of whom have had town meetings and had a lot of questions come up about the police budget at their town meeting and people wanting to cut the police budget. Police budget, as we all know, is, we, we could fund it even more because there's so many other needs that we have in terms of overtime and, and traffic enforcement and I think back to my former colleague, Tom Hurley, who was constantly arguing for, let's get bike patrols in the summer in East Milton Square and the police, Richard, you know this, right? The police on the, walking the beat in the square. So we have so many extra needs that we could be filling with, if we had more funding available in our budget, if we had greater commercial tax base, that we could put more money into the police budget. But there's a lot of unease and uncertainty, I think, right now around some of these issues of race, of policing, but broader than just policing. And, you know, I think this is probably a time for us as the governing, the chief executive board of the town to exercise the leadership role and put something like this together because I think we're going to get at town meetings some questions from people who maybe are brand new town meeting members and don't really understand the process, but just looking at some of the social media comments that are out there, it's clear that people are taking what they're seeing at a national level and just bringing it down to the local level and raising a lot of questions about town government, structure of town government, whether we have enough representation of our diverse population in town government. And I, I think this is a way, and I thank the chair for putting this effort together. I think this is a way for us to take a leadership role on this and be able to go into town meeting and say, we've given some thought to this as the leadership board in town. We, we think there's a role that an advisory committee needs to play to review policies and procedures, not just in the police department, but in, in our own hiring practices, maybe in the school department, in, in, in fire department and, and other departments in town. And it seems to me this is probably a time to, to take that action and I don't think we should wait too long. I think we could put this off until the next meeting or the one after, but I'd like us to be in a position where we are able to say to town meeting and to anyone who asks, because we'll probably get some more emails, that this is something we've given some thought to, where we recognize the crisis that an event in Minneapolis, which follows on centuries of practices throughout the country, has created for, not only for the federal government and the state government, but for municipalities. And this is a proactive way to try to address some of those issues. Nothing's perfect, but I think what the chair has put together is a very good working draft and I'm, although I listened closely to, to you, Richard, and I think your comments are coming from the criticism that the police department is getting and I, I'm with you on that. I, I agree with you that a lot of questions about police chokehold policies and, and de-escalation that ordinary citizens are raising, they are concerning. I, I'm troubled seeing some of the questions that are showing up, but I think this is a way for us to take a broad view and to try to address the issue on a a townwide basis. So I'm, based on this discussion, I'm more in favor of acting more quickly on this than I am delaying it or, or taking it a little more slowly to see how things play out. And I say that respectfully, Richard, I, I share your concerns about the criticism of, and the questions that are going to the police chief. And I'm sure he's inundated with people calling him and asking about the police department's procedure. And I, and I want to reiterate, I, I think our department has done many good things in the area of community policing. You know, back when this board used to hire the cadets, the new officers, Richard, you'd come in with them. One of the questions that we always asked every candidate was their views on community policing. So this has been a focus of prior boards, of selectmen, select board and town administrators and police chiefs coming back at least a couple of decades, maybe more. So we, we should, we should recognize a lot of the things and the progress that Milton has made on those issues. But also not be afraid to take, I think, this step of focusing on the, the townwide issues that have come up as a result of a police situation. But I, I think it's really become a broader issue than a police issue. I think it's, this has become an issue about employment and equity versus equality, that there's so many issues here that are things that, that we could have a group in our town tackle and see whether our town policies and procedures need any updating.
Mr., Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chairman, a question if I may. Katie's mentioning of the word draft makes me ask whether or not there has been an opportunity yet to vet this to other parties within the town.
So, so I discussed it with the members of Courageous Conversations, Milton Interfaith, Clergy Association, superintendent, because she's the superintendent or the superintendent designated is, is listed as a possible member. And the police chief as well. And so those are the, the people that I consulted in, in putting this together.
It is, yes, ask a follow-up question. Is there a possible middle point to the board's conversation whereby what you have just so nicely explained could be put together as sort of the transmittal communication of a work that is initiated by the board, is in progress, is now being given maybe a bit broader review so that other members of the community know, community know about it. There's a little opportunity for additional input with the understanding that at a reasonable point in time, this is going to be implemented.
So, so Arthur, I take your point. Oh, Ms., Ms. Collins?
Oh, perhaps this goes with what Arthur said that to, because the, the proposal that our charge I think is, is something we, we're saying, we, we all view the, the need for and maybe that, that broader sort of conversations about membership. Maybe we take it in two steps. I, I don't know, just a thought.
So, so to Arthur's point about whether we put out some communication on this, the only issue there, Arthur, is if we're communicating issue there, Arthur, is if we're communicating from the board, it would need to be approved by the board. And this is one of the things about our collaborative group, we would need to approve a communication from the board about this. If we were to put something in writing about. So we can do that, but it's not going to happen tonight. You know. No, well.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
So two points. I'm with Kate. I'd be comfortable if we waited a couple of meetings. And I do feel more of a positive, a positive and an understanding side that someone from the police department should be on it. But I, and I say it for two reasons. Not because of, not because of what happened in Minneapolis. I think, A, because of every single member of the Milton Police Department, who was a minority officer, a personal caller, I believe came from the Milton Public Schools. I believe every one of them, as Katie mentioned, that I can think, except maybe one, began as a Milton Police cadet. Which, and we are only one of three communities in the Commonwealth to have such a program to recruit young, eighteen to twenty-year-old, twenty-two-year-olds in college who want to enter law enforcement to enter the Milton Police Department, including Chief King himself and Deputy Chief O'Neill, both came out of that program. My point is that I really think they need to be inclusive of this. I just do. I think there's a lot of questions that they can, but I don't know necessarily as to be at the chief. But I'm just thinking perhaps if maybe we have a couple more weeks and the motions do settle down a little bit, that the chief will have a change of heart on that thought. And I think that will be important to the whole group as a whole. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Look, one idea, and the idea proposed by this, is those departments, to the extent they are being reviewed by this group and their policies and procedures and budgets being reviewed by this group, they would have the opportunity to come in and they would come in and they would have a dialogue with this group. To the extent that you put one department on the board, it could skew the discussion, skew the discussion for all of the groups. So, you know, obviously both sides, there's two sides to that. I'm not, you know, my view is that it's not such a good idea to wait on this. I would like to have it on the agenda for our next meeting after town meeting. It seems to me that there is interest in a majority of the board in doing something along these lines. I think we need to get, you know, perhaps get more feedback, more information. Arthur suggested getting more feedback. We can certainly do that on our own and come back with ideas and how to tweak this if this is something that the majority wants to do. And so far, it seems like there's a majority that wants to do it. But, and I'll certainly in my, you know, effort here, we'll take a lot of what's said and we'll revise this for the next, for the next meeting. But I think it's something we need to move forward on sooner rather than later. I think it's, you know, I think it's fruitful for discussion at our next meeting. I think that will give us some time to tweak this and give some more thought to it. But I'm not of the mind, this is my personal opinion, I'm not of the mind of waiting two weeks or a few weeks. I think this is something that is important and I think it's something that would be helpful for the town and for the departments. And I think it's, as a result, it's something we need to move on. Ms. Collins.
So as I pointed out, the proposal part, I don't know that it needs anything. I guess I'm just, as Katie raised it, a couple of questions about membership. And I think that's, for me, where I could use some more sort of input. Because some of the other departments aren't necessarily, not that they won't be looked at, but they're not represented here. And I know you can't have a committee with every department on it, that doesn't make any sense. But I'm just wondering if it needs to be a little more fluid and do we have? Yeah. Do we have what will really help? Do we have people who can help look at budgets? Or, so I guess it's the membership portion that I'm. So I don't know if you'd like to look at approving part of it and then working on the rest or?
Well, just to be clear, you know, I think it's on for discussion tonight. I think people need to take some time on it. And so it's only on for discussion tonight. My view is we should, you know, at least have a discussion at our next meeting, perhaps take some action on it. With respect to departments being represented, as currently constructed, there is no department, no singular department represented. There is just the town administrator or its designated. So there's no department represented in the current membership. And that's, the purpose of that is so that it be a town-wide review of policies, procedures and budgets. And that would be of all the departments. The reason that the superintendent of schools or its designated is listed as a member is because the schools are by far the largest. And so, and the superintendent, in terms of the schools, kind of matches with the town administrator. So that was the purpose of that, not to single out any particular department, but to have a townwide review, assuming that a group like this would look at all the departments, not just one. The Affordable Housing Trust, purpose of that is that housing is an issue. And that's, and the Affordable Housing Trust should, would have some expertise.
Yes, well, I get that.
And then beyond that, you know, we have listed the organizations that have been helpful to us in this, I think can be helpful going forward. Courageous Conversations, MICA and CDM, Citizens for Diverse Milton. So, and then the question is, well, if you've got, if you've got seven members at that point, how big a committee can be effective? And so then the idea, at least my idea was, well, then have two resident members, wouldn't be in the same precinct, so you get some diversity of precinct location. And then you, again, in this construct, you have a committee of nine, which I think is a, which my personal view is a pretty good number, maybe just on the outside of being too big, but I think is workable. So that's the thought that went into it. It's not, may not be the, it's certainly not the only way to go, but that was the thought that went into it. Ms. Collins.
Mr. Chair, I think nine is a good size. It is a little bit big for some committees, but I think it's important to have a lot of voices represented on this committee. I do think having the school superintendent is important because not only are they a large department, but they, schools just present a lot of unique issues. And we have a very diverse student population. So I think that's key. To Arthur's point, should we maybe put out a draft of this? How would we want to go about doing that? Maybe just put it out and just solicit comment and have comments directed to one person and see what kind of a response we get? Is that, that could generate a lot of emails, but I thought Arthur's point was a good one.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to, you know, make the change that Arthur suggested or wait and, you know, other members may have thoughts about other changes. And then put it out there and solicit for comments. Not typically what we would do, but if that's what the, that's what the members, we can try that.
I agree. It's not typically what we would do and we want to be careful about a precedent on soliciting input on specific documents because that is what we're elected to do and that's our role is to, but this is such, this is such an important issue. It's getting a lot of attention, all these, these issues of diversity and inclusion and racial equity. These are getting a lot of issues nationwide. And I think it's an important enough issue that we could consider a short timeframe of putting this out and letting people comment on it.
I mean, we have had the input, as I said, from Courageous Conversations, from MICA, from the chief of police superintendent as well. But, yeah, I mean, Ms. Collins.
Well, and I do appreciate that. I appreciate so much all the work you put in, but I guess I'm just wondering about, maybe somebody will have another approach. I just, I look at sort of like the whole livability movement and that's where I really feel that you can see the lack of equity for Black and Brown people. So, you know, just I'm looking at an AARP document, Respect and Social Inclusion, Transportation, Outdoor Spaces in Buildings, Housing, Social Participation, Communication and Information, Health Services and Community Support, Civic Participation and Employment, Emergency Preparedness, and we could say Education. So I guess I just, I know it's nice to have a static group and some of these, like, we would need to sort of stay as the core, like Courageous Conversations and MICA. But I just wonder if there's, I've worked on task forces where there's been a core and then there's been a more fluid sort of partner, partner group that comes in and out depending upon what topic you're looking at. And maybe that's too ungainly for a town to use, but I just wanted to put that out there.
So, Ms. Collins, I can guarantee you that someone, and perhaps many people, will have a different approach. I can guarantee you that. I can guarantee, and there may be 27,000 different approaches. At some point, you know, our board will need to make a decision.
So, Mr. Chair, just one other point. I don't want to belabor the conversation, but the proposal does say in section two that the task force or the advisory committee would report to our board at least once each calendar quarter. So my sense would be we should get this up and running, we should get it started and we should see how it works. And if we find that it's too large, a committee, or it's too small, a committee, we need more voices represented, the committee could come back to us and make that suggestion.
It happened with the youth, that happened with the youth task force.
That's.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good discussion, long discussion. Without objection, we'll, you know, we'll put it on for the next meeting and we'll see where we go. And if anyone has any comments, other approaches, other ideas, then please do. This is not, this is certainly not the be-all and-all. It's just, it was a, it was a way to get the discussion going. So let's, let's keep it going.
It's a very good effort. I think it was worth your time and effort getting this started for us. So thank you very much to the chair.
All right. To be continued and acted upon, hopefully. Item, item eight, item nine, approval of the July 28th special town meeting warrant. Item nine, we can defer that, is that right, Mr. Dennehy? All right. You're muted, so just make sure.
That is correct. That is correct, Mr. Chair.
So without objection, we will defer item nine. Item 10, discussion approval of the local action units at 199 Church Street. I think we have Mr. Clark here. This is the local initiative program application for local units. These are the affordable, two affordable units related to the PULTI project that are located on Church Street. And Mr. Clark, do you want to give us the brief update on this? I can tell you before you start that this application appears to require signature of myself, right now, the chief executive officer and the chair of the local housing partnership, which is identified as Julie Kramer. Julie was unable to be with us this evening. She is still doing her due diligence on this and is having a call with DHCD tomorrow about this. And so was not prepared to move forward. And I will tell you, and I do want you, Mr. Clark, to go through it, but I can tell you that based on that, my inclination is to meet jointly with her, since she's a signatory of this and so is the, so is this board, is the executive authority, to meet jointly with her and make sure that we have all the due diligence in our court, just as she does. But, so that's my inclination here is to defer this until she completes her due diligence, which she said she may have done in the next couple of days on this. But anyway, that's just, that's the preface.
Okay. The planning board has a special permit with PULTI. There are, it's a requirement and a special permit to create two affordable units. PULTI has taken and bought a house, 199 Church Street, and they have revamped the entire building. They have, we've had two tours of the building since the repairs have been done. The last one was Friday. And I know that Julie Kramer and Tom Callahan are going to have a phone call tomorrow with DHCD. And when they have that conversation, it's to get to the next steps. The signatures for the local action units application is just one step. It still has to go into DHCD. It still has to get signed off. The planning board is due to meet tomorrow night because one of the lines in the special permit says that the units need to be ready by the time 50% of the units have certificates of occupancy. The 50% will be reached the first week in July. And then that will be unit number 11. 12 will be ready in the middle of July and 13 will be ready at the end of July, 14 the 1st of August. So the new, the units are coming up fast. What PULTI has requested is that the planning board give them some latitude to be able to move that number from 11 to, give them a three-month window. One of the comments that keeps coming back from Tom Callahan is about a bond. Well, there already is a bond on that project. So the bond isn't an issue. There's a special permit that has requirements, is also latitude given in the, in the special permit that would allow the planning board to move that 50% number up. And they're going to take and discuss that Thursday night. I did, this has gone through town council. Town council has no issues with the signatures at this point because it's not, there's still a lot more to the process. You're muted.
I wanted to make sure I heard you, I heard everything you had to say, Bill. Questions and comments from the members. Yeah, I will say that I, if Julie Kramer is not yet comfortable in signing this, I am not yet comfortable in signing this. But my understanding is that she will be completing her review of this. And this is, you know, just so we know, this is a 144-page document. There's only a couple of issues that I understand that she wants to look into, including the this, the condo, proposed condo fees and the sale prices, which are indicated to be the same, even though the square footage is different. There's a couple of things that she just wanted to check and do her due diligence on. And so that's my view that we could.
I know that.
If I may, Bill, if I may. If we could put this on, you know, perhaps before town meeting on Monday or if failing that. If I may, Bill, if I may, if we could put this on, you know, perhaps before town meeting on Monday, or if failing that, put it on for next Wednesday. Ms. Collins?
Thank you. I was just wondering if Kevin Freitag has had a chance to look, are there condominium documents drawn up yet? And did he looked at them? I couldn't remember. I, I'm sure you told me already, Bill.
Kevin and Peter McNulty have been going over the documents, and they have no problems with them. I talked to Peter this morning, and Peter has said that he and Bob Lavoy, who is Pulte's attorney, are going back and forth, and they're, they're going line by line over all the documents. They have a open conversation, and there are no issues with any of the documents at this point. I mean, there's what we're trying to do is get this document, get the application into DHCD. Once it goes into DHCD, there's another review period. Once it goes through that review period, then there needs to be a marketing plan. The marketing plan needs to be approved by DHCD. Once the marketing plan is out there, people stop looking at it, they start gathering names that can go into the housing lottery. This is not something that is going to put people in houses in a month. This is something that's going to take potentially up to three months.
All, yeah, in my view, all the more reason to, you know, complete any, any due diligence if it's just going to take less than a week. Other comments or questions from the members? Mr. Dennehy, did, well, I just, okay. All right. Anything else on this? Comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the local action units at 199 Church Street.
I thought we wanted to wait for Julie Kramer.
All right, okay. I just, when he said motion, that's why you said you want a motion, huh?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm putting it out there. I don't, I don't think we should, but
All right, okay, all right, so.
I don't, but I'm not, I'm not in charge here. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just the, I'm just the, the traffic cop.
Yeah, right. I'm fine. We can wait till the next, I'm fine till the next meeting.
All right, all right. So we'll put this on, depending on what we hear, we'll put this on either for Monday before town meeting, or, or next Wednesday. And then, and then maybe someone else will be able to sign it instead of me. Okay. Item, thank you, Bill. Sorry to keep you waiting.
All right, good night.
Good night, Bill.
Item 11, Milton Foundation for 2020 Teacher of the Year Award citations. One of the best nights of the year in this town, in my view, is the Teacher of the Award celebration. Unfortunately, this year, they couldn't have it because of the circumstances, couldn't have it the way they normally do with all the teachers and students and the parents, and, and, but there are still Teacher of the Year awards, and we want to recognize those. And so we have, we have citations for the teachers of the award, who are Ms. Taylor Ferret of the Tucker Elementary School, Ms. Caroline Morton of the Cunningham Elementary School, Ms. Fatim Kramer of the Collicott Elementary School, Ms. Caitlin Good of the Glover Elementary School, Mr. Jim Moonen of Pierce Middle School, Mr. Jason Cody of Milton High School, Ms. Elaine Fodlin of the Elementary School, and the, well, the first ones that I mentioned were Teacher of the Award, who's the Paraprofessional of the Year Award. And then Marty O'Keefe McKenna, who was hired when I was on the school committee as the, as the liaison officer, who does such important work to reach out to families to make sure that they're aware of the resources, and to make sure that they're on, if you say, as we say, on the grid, that they're aware of what the resources are that are out there. She has been awarded the 2020 Dr. Mary Grassa O'Neill Award. So item 12 is approval of citations for those worthy teachers, paraprofessional, and paraprofessional of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and the Dr. Mary Grassa O'Neill Award. Comments or questions from the members?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve and sign citations recognizing the Milton Foundation Education's 2020 Teacher of the Year Award recipients.
Motion's been made in second name for the discussion. It's be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Wells? Mr., you're muted, Richard, but I think you said yes. Yep, oh, still muted, but I got you. You unmute for the later on, there you go.
I got it. Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. So we will get out these, get these citations out to these deserving people and look forward to this because it is a great event. Item 12, approval of a letter of support for municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant. Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Somewhat quickly, so the, the town, earlier this year, led by our wonderful administrative assistant, Hillary Waite, who was at the time our environmental coordinator, held a series of workshops and listening sessions, and I want to thank the members of the community that stepped up. We had department heads, we had business owners, we had residents, other community stakeholders, that had these listening sessions to go over what might be a possible municipal vulnerability preparedness grant action. And, and through all of these arduous meetings, there was some very relevant information, and, and out of this came the notion that we do a complete assessment of approximately 30 culverts along Pine Tree Brook in our town, which is a tributary to the Napontet. So this document, and I'll be looking for an approval letter from the board this evening as well, to support this, would, would basically take a look at the drainage model, and developing a drainage model for this watershed that's so important to our community and the environment that we have. If it is awarded, Public Works would, would grant a contract with an environmental consultant. 80% of the $200,000 would be covered by the grant, and the town's in-kind staff and time matching would be the other 20%. So, great project undertaken by Hillary Waite. It's now in the dutiful hands of Anna Meyer, our new town environmental coordinator, and many thanks to the constituents that spent long hours trying to come up with a solution as, as to how best Milton can become more prepared from a vulnerability perspective.
Questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to do a ratification, I'll make a motion for ratification, letter of support for the municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. And, and this is to approve and assign that letter.
Yes.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Hillary.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I went to one of these sessions, and not only did I, I learn a lot, they, they were just really well-run, and I, I just wanted to thank everyone. And when we do another one of these, people show up, they really, you learn a lot about your town.
Other comments or questions? So the motion's been made in second. This will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. Item 13, reappointment of the Conservation, Conservation Commission member.
I move that we reappoint Ingrid Beatty of 57 Ruggles Lane to the Conservation Commission, and thank you for serving.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. Item 14, the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I want to echo a sentiment that you had started tonight's meeting by thanking the clerk and her staff for putting on a, a wonderful election yesterday. 19% turnout was not fantastic, but given the circumstances around COVID and social distancing and some of the concerns that people had, I don't think people really understand what it took to put this one on. There were hours spent at each polling location to make sure that social distancing and, and CDC requirements were followed, so that we, we handled this in the safest possible manner. So kudos to the clerk and her staff, and, and to her humbleness. She wanted me to specifically thank the people that did the work, the Milton police officers that spent the entire day there, all the volunteers that worked all the polls, the DPW folks, Consolidated Facilities people, Milton Public Schools, Council on Aging, all the facilities that hosted these sites. So I, I do want to echo your sentiment and pass along Clerk Galvin's supportive cheer for all those that, that, that made it a success. Today, as we know, is June 10th. The animal shelter took a step in the right direction. The owner's project manager requests for qualifications were due today. We received six very thorough applications. The Animal Shelter Advisor, Advisory Committee will be taking a look at this at their next meeting, picking that OPM and moving forward with finally the construction phase of our animal shelter. So that's a great story. And lastly, I just want to thank all of, all of the town employees that participated in Maya. Our general insurance company offers a rewards program. We this year's budget calls for about $1.1 million for general insurance in the town, but through a series of policy submissions, best practices and training and webinars that took place, nearly over 5% of that $1.1 million will be waived as we earned a little over $63,000 in credits. So a lot of good training being done. We're a safer workforce. This board has submitted some policies in the past, be it vehicle use policy, or complete streets policy, stuff like that, that, that really goes a long way with, with helping us reduce the premium for health insurance. So pretty good story in, in, in times when, when we're counting every dollar these days. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Item 17, the chair's report. Let me just say, the clerk's office is, is now performing, as always performed, but, but, but it is, it is being burdened in a way that our health department has been burdened for the last two months, because no sooner did the election end yesterday than the preparations have, which have been ongoing, but they're going right into town meeting on Monday night, and then after that, there'll be future elections. Anyway, there's a lot of, lot going on in the clerk's department. They're doing a great job, just, just as all the departments, but, but right now, it's the clerk's office that is, that is really stepping up in a, in a, in a heroic way. The other thing I want to mention, Ms. Collins alluded to it early this evening. Thank you to Senator Timblety for hosting a, a Zoom informational briefing this morning, attended by Mr. Dennehy, myself, Ms. Ms. Collins. It was with Senator Michael Roderick, who's the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, and it was a review of the Massachusetts economic and fiscal outlook. It was attended by town officials from throughout Senator Timblety's district. It was a very informative and helpful review. Couple of the highlights from Chair Roderick and Senator Timblety. The FY20 hole from the state, they think they will, they, they're confident that they will be filling by use of the rainy day fund, and by some savings in Mass Health and Medicaid, because elective surgeries have been put off, and so that will save money. So they're confident that that hole will be covered without any NRC cuts from the governor, which is, which is important for local cities and towns. Number two, for FY21, the consensus revenue number before COVID-19 was $31 billion. They are projecting a, a decrease of anywhere from 16 to 20%, which is $5 to $6 billion less in tax revenue. So that means there will likely be cuts, and the timing on that, for learning what those cuts be, cuts may be, maybe sometime around mid-July, when that comes, hopefully, when that comes into shape. So was very informative. Chair Roderick also went through some of the strengths and the weaknesses that the Commonwealth has in the midst of this pandemic, and dealing with it from an economic point of view. So it was very helpful, good to know that they don't anticipate NRC cuts for this fiscal year. And in terms of the, the projections for FY21, they are right in line with what our town administration projected in developing the budget after COVID-19. So, so our conservative estimates from our town accountant and our town administrator, those conservative estimates need to be right on target, and we're well-served again. So thank you to Senator Timblety and Senator Roderick for that, for that briefing today. That's all I have. Members' reports, Ms. Collins?
I just want to say, I'm sorry, you asked a great question, and I, I, I don't know how I overlooked saying that you were there, but
That's okay.
I'm line question, so very important. But, but, but I have no report.
Ms. Ms. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked that we put an update from the Master Plan Implementation Committee on the agenda, so I'll just be very brief. The Implementation Committee met last week. It was our first meeting since prior to COVID in early March, and as I think everyone knows, the focus of our work for the first probably three years of our existence has been on the Milton Village, both the Worf project, which is progressing, we have our own committee working on that, but also the zoning, which we went, we sent to the planning board, and the planning board has put forward for the July town meeting, was going to be June, but we, we took it off the warrant for June, and it's on the July warrant. The update is that in two weeks, the planning board, supported by the Implementation Committee, will be putting together a webinar, and I believe the planning board is going to talk about this and finalize the webinar at their meeting tomorrow night. But it's going to be a presentation for town meeting members, and we'd like to invite all of the boards and committees to either come to the live webinar or watch it when it's replayed on tape, because the, the goal here is to try to get town meeting members familiar with the project and what the warrant article and the proposed zoning entails prior to town meeting. Assuming that it will be a virtual town meeting, or even if it is an in-person meeting, there may still be challenges. So we want to try to get as much information out early as possible, and maybe eliminate some questions or answer them in advance. So we're going to be having a webinar. I don't have a date yet, but it's targeted for the week of June 22nd, and the planning board's going to talk about it tomorrow night at their meeting. Our next project that we have already begun is relates to the town civic center area, and we've been working with the neighborhood and the fire station building committee on plans for the area. And I think everyone knows that the master of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council did some initial drawings for us. We, the, the Implementation Committee had some discussion with MAPC and the neighborhood on, on March 10th, and unfortunately, we, because of the COVID crisis, really have not been able to move that forward. At that time, we decided to go back to MAPC and ask for some follow-up work to be done. It grew out of some of the conversations that we had with not only the neighborhood, but also some students who gave us comments, and, and others. And I mentioned at our mid-March meeting that we may be looking for some additional funding to help finish up the MAPC work. The Fire Station Building Committee has committed a couple of thousand dollars from their budget, I think $2,000, to the site plan work for the town civic center area. I had mentioned in March, a question as to whether our board would be willing to fund some additional monies, perhaps just a few thousand dollars. But at our discussion the other night, the Implementation Committee felt that since we're so close to the beginning of the next fiscal year, that it might make sense to just push that forward until July and fund it out of our own budget. So that is our next project. We is our next project. We are still going to be working on that. Someone had brought up at our meeting, too, whether we might want to pursue again the bed and breakfast bylaw that the Planning Board had worked on probably seven or eight or nine years ago. It did not move forward at that time, but the Planning Board, through Kathleen O'Donnell, is working on the condo conversion bylaw. That was discussed at our Implementation Committee meeting, and that led into a discussion about whether we should explore again bed and breakfast. So we're going to put that on a future agenda item. But we also wanted to just reiterate to this board the request I made in mid-March, and now, of course, we're a new board with a new member, which is if our board has any thoughts on what priorities or goals we would like the Implementation Committee to focus on for FY2021, we'd like your input on that. So a lot of it has been Planning Board-driven, but there are projects that are not zoning or planning per se, Planning Board measures. So if there's something that anyone on our board thinks is a priority that perhaps the Implementation Committee could look at, if it touches on something that's in the master plan, then we are interested in hearing what that may be.
So we can include that as part of our future agenda?
Yes.
Just a thought to Katie's point. Pastor, could we do, how are we looking at the reserve fund right now, Mr. Dennehy?
Sorry, let me unmute myself. Yeah, we don't believe much at all. The Public Works Department, usually the brunt of that is usually picked up by Snow and Ice Control. The Public Works Department is confident they can absorb the overage in Snow and Ice Control in his operating budget. So at this time, we haven't seen any come across or are we hearing of any?
Katie, would it be all right with you if, as we get to the last two weeks of the fiscal year, to look at that and maybe take a couple thousand dollars from the reserve fund transfer and move it over to the MPIC? No?
Yeah, maybe I should go back and talk with the chair about it. The sense of the committee was that since we're so close to a new fiscal year, we could fund it out of our own budget for FY21. But why don't I bring that back up to the chair, then, if the board is willing to consider that? I'm not sure it's going to be necessary. Richard, I appreciate the offer and the thought, but why don't I talk with Cheryl, you guys, about that, and let her know that we had that conversation?
Okay.
Thank you, Katie. Richard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to be invited welcoming Mr. Doyle to our board. Welcome to Ain Arthur, your first night here. I'd also like to thank you tonight, Mr. Chair, not only for your warm comments about Brown Lovely, that was well thought out, well done, but also I get from the heart and the head where you're trying to go with this, the task force and the issues are, in a way, if perhaps one good thing that comes with America from the death of George Floyd is that the brain, the top of race to the forefront, perhaps we're doing it for the last time. Civil War was hundreds of years ago, and we should not have to be having this fight today in this country, we're too great a country. And finally, I just want to thank Chase Berkeley and Tom McAuliffe, Bill Rich of the DPW. There was just a little thing that happened yesterday, Mr. Dennehy may know. As you know, I was all emotional last week when I spoke about the death of Kim Casey, but in an impromptu salute, if you want to use the term, yesterday is Kimberly's remains left this town for the last time to the crematorium. Bill O'Brien from Owen Funeral Home took her through a tour through the DPW, where she spent 32 years. And I actually tweeted out the picture. Even, I heard about it, and I just shot in there for five minutes, and it was very, very, for many of them, I can't remember in my lifetime, and I think my dad, first part of the DPW, when I was probably no more than five years old, I don't remember anyone in the DPW dying while they were still on the service of the town. And I don't think any of the DPW employees did as well. And I quote one of the workers there, who was very emotional, the end who stood up by himself and said, "She was so strong and still tough, fought right to the end." But that was well done by Chase. So thank you again. Thank you for that.
Richard, Mr. Doyle. So members' reports can consist of announcement of events that may have...
I don't have a base tonight.
No, not at all. An announcement of events or important items in the community that may have occurred or may occur. We try to stay away from substantive discussions and members' reports unless they're listed on the agenda, as Katie had listed the update in the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So it's generally intended as things in the community, more of a community report, if you have anything, that has happened or may happen or is planned. So that's what our, that's what our members' report. So don't feel compelled, but if you have something to say, please, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll defer on that to a future meeting, if I may, but in the meantime, let me just say what an honor and privilege it is to be a member of the Select Board, and I sincerely look forward to working with each and every member in the interest of the community.
Well, right back at you, Arthur. Right back at you. All right. Thank you for that. Item 17, public comment response. There was no public comment. Item 18, the meeting minutes, we have drafts of May 27th, June 5th, and June 8th. Is this something that we are prepared to act on? Something that we're prepared to act on this evening?
Mr. Chair, I read the June minutes, and I thought that they both looked good. Hillary had emailed me a question about May 27th, and then I tried to print it to take it home with me today, and I was not able to do that, so I have not had a chance to look at it. I don't know if Hillary connected with anyone else on the question. Hillary, I apologize for that, that I just was pretty straight out today at work and was not able to get back to you.
Can I suggest that we move forward on the June 5th and the June 8th minutes?
Second.
All right. I'll move to approve the minutes of the meeting on June 5th and June 8th. And Mr. Wells is seconded.
I am seconded, yes.
Wells is seconded. Any further discussion? It'll be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, you're muted.
Muted, yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Epstein.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. And so we will have the 10:07 meeting minutes at the next meeting for approval. Confirm future meeting dates. We talked about meeting at 6:30 on the 15th Pride of Town meeting, and it sounds like we may need a meeting next Wednesday. For Mr. Doyle's purposes, Arthur, we used to meet, before COVID hit, we met twice a month. For the first couple of months, we were meeting twice a week because there were a lot of things to respond to. We have, in the last, I'd say, three or four weeks, gone down to once a week. We hopefully will get back to twice a month in the near term, but I happen to think we may need a meeting next Wednesday. But obviously, defer to the little board on that.
I'm still looking about that vacation date.
It's coming. It's coming.
You can't go anywhere.
I went to Navarro last night. That was a big deal.
All right. Outside? Sat outside?
Yeah.
All right. Any issues with setting a meeting for next Wednesday at 7? All right, so we'll do that. Item 20, future agenda items. Do any of the members have any future agenda items that have not been discussed or put on the list? Mr. Dennehy, I see is motioning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. During tonight's joint committee meeting of the finance committees, the town accountant had mentioned that should something go wrong with Monday night's town meeting, virtual, i.e. we don't get a quorum, the backup plan most communities are using is the 112 budget, so should like to present that to this board. Brief discussion about that. We don't anticipate any problems. I think we've all heard from Mr. Hiss and Ms. Schroth and that group, they've done a fantastic job in readying everyone, but it's just, it's a, it's something in our back pocket, just in case things don't go as planned Monday night, and many communities are using. And Department of Revenue and Divisional Local Services is recommending that you have that as a backup.
Mike, would this be for prior to town meeting or next Wednesday night?
If we could do it prior to town meeting, and should something, again, pop up, they're asking that they be filed by June 15th, understanding that most communities' town meeting has been pushed out to the 22nd. So we are at an advantage from a timeframe with that. But yeah, if it's a small agenda item we could put on for Monday night, I'd appreciate it.
Do we need to push back to 6:00 based on that, or do we still think 6:30 is okay?
6:30 is fine. It's just a quick, quick presentation.
Fair enough. Anything else? Mr. Wells?
Just a quick question. Did you say next Wednesday you want to go 5:00? 7:00? Are we going to go to the 5:00?
I said 7:00, but if the members prefer 5:00...
I'll do either. I defer to Katie. She's the one who has that.
Well, I mean, I probably could, I probably could do 5:00 next week. I mean, the weeks are a little bit fluid for me. It's all, whether I go into the office or not, it just kind of depends on client needs, so it's a little hard for me to predict, but I can probably do 5:00.
But if you want to keep it at 7:00, I'm fine. I just don't want to go at 7:00, 5:00. So I've actually got to set my calendar every other week now. They just don't change.
Well, I know others prefer 5:00, so I could probably do 5:00. At some point, when we get back into the real world of working, we, you know, 7:00 is really the normal time, but I could probably do 5:00.
I wonder if, I wonder if 7:00 is better for the residents because it's, you know, kind of consistent. You know, we meet at 7:00, you know, we met at 5:00.
I'm thinking of you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I know.
All right, okay, 7:00 is fine. I just, I looked at my calendar. When I looked, it was already in there for 5:00 o'clock, and I realized.
All right. Item 21 is a review and vote on the Fifth Amendment to the Grant of Easement by Worf Street LLC to the Town of Milton. This is an amendment to an easement back from 2002, and I believe we have Mr. McNulty from our town council's law firm and Mr. Dennehy. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to tee this up, or is it Mr. McNulty?
I'd like to just introduce Mr. McNulty to the Zoom conference. Mr. McNulty, thank you for joining us tonight. I appreciate your attendance.
Good to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mike.
So what are we, I mean, what are we approving?
So this is an easement for the yacht club, and the primary purpose of me being here is to remotely notarize your signature, which is very exciting. So if you'll indulge me, I think the best way to do it is go in the order in which your signatures appear on the easement, on the signature line, after, of course, is any discussion. It would start with you, Mr. Chair. Show me your photo ID, your license or your passport, if you could. Sign the document and then show me your signature.
Okay.
As the legislature has prescribed.
So I'm going to need to put my wallet on.
I gotta go find my wallet.
Okay, okay.
You see your passport? My passport right behind here. I'll be right there.
This is a bold new world in town government.
I have my wallet. All right, so but before we sign this, but before we sign this, Peter, we need to approve it, right?
Yes.
All right. We'll do that vote first. So we need to approve the Fifth Amendment, and then we need to approve the gift. Oh, no, it's something different. I'm sorry.
Different items.
Sorry. All right, so we're going to do a vote on the easement, then we're going to have you magically and virtually notarize us, and then we'll move on to the gift.
So you need the motion read?
Well, Arthur and Richard have stepped away, so we'll just wait until they return.
Mr. McNulty, I have a question. First of all, my name is misspelled, if you wouldn't mind just correcting it. It's C-O-N-L-O-N. Did you say we need to show you our license on Zoom for the whole, you know, to be a part of a public document? I am a little concerned about privacy concerns, and I was not told we were going to be doing this tonight, so...
So that is the procedure that is prescribed by the legislature. If you are concerned about privacy, you could cover your license number with either your finger or a piece of tape. But theoretically, Ms. Conlin, I don't know you, so if we were, if I was sitting in front of you, I would still ask for your photo ID. And the session needs to be recorded, which it is, and we need to keep this session, if you can believe it or not, for the period of 10 years following notarization. Yep.
So is everyone else done, Mr. Chair? I don't know where we're at. Did he do this yet?
All right, so now we're all back. What we're going to do first is have a motion on the amendment to the Grant of Easement. So we'll have a motion on that, and then we're going to do our notarized signatures for Mr. McNulty.
So I'll make a motion to approve and execute. Do we need the word, Mr. McNulty, do we need the word review?
I'm sorry.
You have the first word. I want to make a motion to approve and execute the Fifth Amendment to Grant of Easement by Worf Street LLC. The Town of Milton dated November 18, 2002, and recorded with the Norfolk County Register of Deeds at Book 17825, page 327. I omitted the word review on the front because we're not going to review it, just to approve this.
That's fair.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. I have a further question just regarding the notarization. Isn't it still possible for one of us to, for all of us to go up to Town Hall and sign it tomorrow, even though we voted it tonight? And I don't know, we have a notary there. We used to always have a notary at Town Hall, but to do that, isn't that a preferable process here?
Certainly, if you have a notary. Yeah, the theory was, Ms. Conlin, to be as accessible to the board as possible.
No, I appreciate your being here, Mr. McNulty. Don't get me wrong, that's, I'm just, it's a little bit of a surprise, and I wish I had known about it because I would have probably suggested this earlier if that was, if I knew we were going to be asked to show our driver's license on film that's, you know, accessible to the public.
Mr. Dennehy?
Mr. McAuliffe, the Town Treasurer, or Chief King, or Christine Stanton, I should be able to find any one of those three tomorrow, if you don't feel comfortable with this, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned for all of us, not just me, but, you know, maybe, maybe not everyone shares that view. It just, this is the sort of thing I'd appreciate some kind of a heads up on before the meeting.
I'm fine with Katie. Mr. Dennehy's right. We do have, we have plenty of notaries. I'm fine with stopping by and signing it tomorrow. Is that okay? That's my opinion. I'll do that, Katie. That's fine.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the amendment to the Grant of Easement? This will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we've approved the amendment, and now we will have the virtual signing for those members who wish to virtually sign, and the other members will come in tomorrow to do it in front of an notary here. So I'm going to virtually sign to be done with it. Any other members? So should I go first, Peter, and tell me?
I think so. I think that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
Tell me what to do.
Okay, so if you show me your license, that's good. Get it a little bit closer to the camera. Okay, perfect. And are you signing this easement freely and voluntarily today?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead and sign it, and then you'll show me your wet signature on that page.
All right, and here is my wet signature.
Perfect, okay. Ms. Collins, are you?
I will, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I just hold it up? Can you, can you see that?
I can. That's perfect. Thank you. And if you go ahead and sign it, and you're signing this freely and voluntarily today, this easement, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you could show me your signature when it's completed?
Yes.
Perfect. And Mr. Doyle?
Thank you. I'll go to Town Hall tomorrow, please.
Perfect, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wells?
I'm good. I'm fine. I didn't print a copy in anyway, so I have to go to Town.
I was just going to say that as well. I don't have a copy printed either, so there's no way I could sign it. My printer here at...
My printer here at home is down, so.
Yeah.
That, that's why it just would be helpful if we, you know, if we have something like this in the future, if we just get a little notice about it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
So, Mr. Dennehy, maybe you can let us know what time tomorrow morning or who you want to get or?
Certainly, I'll circulate an email now between the three of them and the three of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, thank you, Mr. McNulty, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one is review and vote on a receipt for the town from the, from the Preddy's.
Right.
Mr. Dennehy.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, I was going to make a motion.
I get the explanation from Mike. Mike, do you want to just, going to give us a recap of this?
Yes, so for those of you that aren't familiar, there was a family who owned a parcel of land off of, on Naponton Valley Parkway. Member Doyle will remember this, it came in front of the Conservation Commission, they accepted it and passed it on to the Select Board. This is the final step in that process where it's, I believe we signed this this evening and then, and then we file it with the Norfolk County Deeds and then it becomes the property of the town.
All right, so questions, comments or motions?
Go ahead. I'll make the motion, no, go ahead, Bondi, you can make it.
Oh, no, so we have to actually read the formal motion.
Right, right.
Okay.
Go ahead, you got it.
Okay, it's just because it's long, right, Richard? Pursuant, I make the following motion. Pursuant to M G L Chapter forty, actually, it looks as if there, it says pursuant to pursuant to, so I don't know if we need to clean that up, but pursuant to M G L Chapter forty, section eight C, the Select Board for the Town of Milton, do hereby vote to transfer the care, custody, management and control of property owned by Charles H. Preddy Jr., Brian G. Preddy, Allison Gally and Adrian Diane Preddy, shown on Milton Assessor's map nine, lot twelve, as referred in a deed from Charles H. Preddy dated May fourth, two thousand and five, reported with Norfolk County Registry District of the Land Court, as docket number ten sixty-four ninety-two three on certificate of title number seventeen oh one seventy-eight to the Conservation Commission of the Town of Milton, said property having been donated by record owners to the Conservation Commission of the Town of Milton and such donation being authorized pursuant to M G L Chapter forty, section eight C.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion's been made and second, roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Conlin.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
Doyle.
Yes.
Zulish, yes. And so, and so now, Peter, I don't know that this needs to be, no, I don't think this needs to be notarized, right?
It does not, nope, just your signature.
I just need to fill in that there were five sitting members of the board.
Correct.
And then date it. And today is the tenth, is that right?
It is.
Five sitting members, I'm writing in the numeral five, the tenth, and I'm going to sign it. And I will leave this, I will leave this and my signature on the easement on your desk, Mike, is that, is that good? Okay, all right, so that is done. That's item twenty-two. And if there's nothing else, we can vote to go into executive session for a brief.
It's up to you.
So I will move to enter into executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property specifically four eighty-five, forty-seven Blue Hills Parkway, believing that having such a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Eighteen seconds, be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Conlin.
Yes.
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 Mr. Zulish, yes? Oh, and I forgot to mention not to return to open session, so I will add that amendment on my own, that we won't be returning. And so we'll go to executive session. For anyone still there viewing, thank you for viewing and we will see you again at town meeting on Monday night and then again on Wednesday night, the seventeenth. So thank you very much.